Meeting called to order, please. Please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that our presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted to stay the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Getchea.
Yep.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Eleven present.
Any memorials today? Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity, a moment of silence in that chamber for Judge Robert Barton. Passed away peacefully in hospice care on Friday, May 20, 2022, two weeks shy of his 92nd birthday. Judge Barton was born on June 3, 1930, to Dr. Benjamin and Alice Barton of Everett, Mass. He attended Everett Public School, graduated in 1948 from Boston Latin School, where he was a Boston City All-Star in football and basketball. In 1992, he graduated from Dartmouth College, and in 1955, he was graduated first in his class from Boston University School of Law. After law school, Judge Barton enlists into the United States Marine Corps and served his country for the next four years in occupied Japan, Okinawa, Philippines, and San Francisco, riding in the rank from second to 10th to captain. While stationed in San Francisco in 1959, Judge Barton met Norma Anne Green. It was love at first sight, and they married on February 7, 1959. Judge Barton was appointed as the Assistant DA by Middlesex District Attorney William O'Dea in August 1959. And for the next four years, Judge Barton prosecuted felony cases throughout Middlesex County. After leaving the district attorney office, Judge Barton joined law firm before going to private practice. The Barton family settled in the town of Bedford, Mass., and raised two sons, Steve and Dan. Judge Barton coached youth sport and served two terms as a Bedford Selectman, and thereafter five years as a Bedford Town Moderator. He spent many years as a trustee of Middlesex Community College in 1978. Judge Barton, then before Judge, was Robert Barton, was nominated for the Supreme Court Judgeship, Superior Court Judgeship by Governor Dan Michael Dukakis. Judge Barton went on to serve 22 years until his retirement at age 70 in 2000. He set primary in Suffolk, Middlesex, and Essex County. He presided over hundreds of high-profile cases, most of which is first-degree murder cases. Judge Barton was known to provide all litigation, affair, and impartial trial. He took pride in the fact that his case were really overturned on appeal. The Barton family, to Judge Barton, families always came first. He's adore his love, he's adore the love of his wife, Norma. There was family dinner, family sport, family vacation. Retirement was a renaissance for Judge Barton and his wife, Norma. They winter in the Highland Beach, Florida, travel to the far north corner of the world. Judge Barton and Norma had developed a large and close circle of friends of various backgrounds and entertained regularly at home. He liked following the Boston Red Sox and the Boston Bruins. Judge Barton is survived by his son, Steve, and his wife, Paula, his son, Dan, and wife, Alyssa, grandchildren Maxwell, Jacqueline, Addison, and his sister, Marjorie Levine. He was predeceased by his beloved wife, Norma, his grandson, Christopher, and his brother, Richard Barton. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. Just thought I have a moment of silence for Patrick Riley, 29, of Worcester, passed away Monday, June 20. He was born in Boston, the son of Dennis Riley and Judy Kuchu Riley, nephew of Steve Kuchu. He was raised in the Drake and Chelmsford area and attended Greater Lowell Volk. Aside from his parents, he has a sister, Alyssa Bastine, her husband, Jose, and a sister, Erin Riley. He had many roots to City Lowell, and he'll be sadly missed. Thank you.
Any other memorial? Mr. Clerk, turn the light, please. We now go to the mayor's business, 2.1, Communication Remote Zoom Participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Janess. On favor, see eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson.
On the minutes, I just had on page seven, one of the pieces that was missing that wasn't documented was the investment part. It is, it is, they do put concern reduction to commitment, but they're missing the investment piece. So I don't know if they could just...
This is under the city clerk, the minutes from the last meeting?
Yep, from the last meeting.
Okay.
So it should be page seven.
Mr. Clerk, would you take a note of that?
I will.
Any other comments on the minutes?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, so the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of White 23 Budget, June 7, City Council Regular Meeting, June 14, Municipal Facilities Subcommittee Joined with School Facilities Subcommittee, June 21, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Getchea, seconded by Counselor Leahy. On favor, see eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Rourke.
If I may, can we jump to 6.4, please? The person requested to speak to the council on this matter.
Motion by Counselor Rourke to take an item out of order, item number 6.4, seconded by Counselor Scott. 6.4, Vote Authorize City Manager Enter Into Parking Agreement With Pride Star Student Transportation, Inc. Any comments or questions by anyone? Okay, so way full reading and second reading by title. City Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement with Pride Star Student Transportation, Inc., with principal office at 229 Stedman Street, Lowell, Massachusetts, 01851, for use of a portion of premises located at 234 and 268 Mount Vernon Street and 5 Wondom Street in the City of Lowell for the purpose of parking student transportation vehicles. Motion to adopt, any comments, question? Motion to adopt by Counselor Rourke, seconded by Counselor Yem. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Getchea.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy. Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Oh, yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Ten yeas.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Mercia.
If I could just take 10, suspend the roll, since we're under suspension, take 10.1, my motion, there is a woman here ready to speak on this, and I don't want to detain her all night long.
Okay. Like you, we'll take that in a second. Would you like to say something on a previous?
Sorry.
Motion, yes.
Quickly, David Daly, 229 Stedman Street. This is a situation that was concerned enough between the city and myself and the Lowell Food Bank. They'd been looking for a building for a number of years. They entered into a contract to purchase the building that were our parking situation for our bus vehicles. We, Pride Star Student Transport, has the contract for special aid busing in the City Lowell. We'd been there for three years. It's been a great spot. The Lowell Food Bank has been looking for a building for eight years. They've, I think they've scoured every piece of the city, and they've found a building that worked. Unfortunately, it didn't work with us in the space. But through an effort with Christine and her staff, and specifically Mr. Manager, Tom Golden, we were able to get across the finish line to locate a new spot for us, and that's the city's land at 148 Mount Vernon Street. That allowed us to go there for a couple of years, bring some money into the city. We're going to invest about $150,000 into the property. But the best part of this whole thing was that the Food Bank was finally able to find a building after eight years, and I want to thank the administration again, and the City Lowell and the councils for making this all happen. This is one of those win-wins where, you know, we're moving some things around, but everyone's going to reap the benefits of it. So Deb Calery is here, just quickly from the Food Bank, to say a couple of words, just to...
Thank you. Thank you, city manager and counselors, for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you for the favorable vote. I want to thank Christine McCall and her office, too, for really making this happen. I have to mention, on behalf of our broker, Yovani Baez Rose, who really worked hard with our broker to identify a property here in the city. As David mentioned, we've been looking in this city for eight years for a building, long and hard. We've seen just about every building that has come up. Currently, we are serving an average of 75,000 people monthly, and last year, we distributed nearly 5 million pounds of food. This building is going to allow us to do more. It's a one-level building, and it's a little newer than our 150-year-old warehouse that we're now in. So thank you very much again for the opportunity. Thank you for voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you both for coming to speak, and congratulations. No other speaker. There's a motion by Counselor Mercia to take item 10.1 out of order, seconded by Counselor Leahy. 10.1 is one of the motions, 10.1. Counselor Mercia requests city manager find a way to secure locations for the Nalox Box, mailbox that holds Narcan in strategic places of need, seconded by Counselor Scott. We have registered speaker, please.
Hello, city counselors and administration. Mayor Sokari Chow, thank you all for allowing me to speak today. I'm here with my colleagues, Shen Mishk and Gianna Sandelli, from Lowell House Addiction Treatment and Recovery. I work at the Greater Lowell Health Alliance, and we've partnered and fully funded an intervention to reduce the amount of overdose deaths in the city. So this is a Nalox box, and its premise is similar to an AED where bystanders can provide lifesaving support to someone who's found unresponsive due to an overdose. It contains four kits of Naloxone or Narcan, which has two sprays inside. This is a face shield for rescue breaths. It also has instructions that tell you how to administer Narcan and also highlight to call 911 so that first responders can come on site. We are proposing that the Parks Department install one near the restrooms at South Common, which is a place with a high prevalence of overdoses, as well as Roberto Clemente Park in the Highlands, where over the past two years, that's been a high incidence of overdose deaths outside. As you may know, most of the healthcare services are located downtown. It can be difficult for outreach to respond expediently. If you're interested, they're very easy to install, and LTLC has already installed one. Other interested partners include Middlesex Community College, Win Pharmacy, and CBA, to name a few. Other municipalities that have installed Nalox boxes in their communities include Cambridge, Northampton, East Bridgewater, Plymouth, and Holyoke. The GLHA and Lowell House will monitor these boxes and replenish kits whenever they are used and replace them when they expire. We are also including the sticker with Gianna's direct line at Lowell House so that Lowell Aliens can contact us if they notice a Naloxone kit has been used. Is there any questions?
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. As far as installation, at South Common, will there be any training provided to the seasonal help or the park staff that's going to be stationed down there? Because we have a lot of young high school kids that come in as lifeguards for the summer, so I think some training would be in order, if that's, if they're going to be expected to administer. And as far as replenishment, once it's used, is that just a matter of calling, and someone will come out and refill? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So we could definitely provide the trainings. Lowell House can provide the trainings to anyone interested. And as for the replenishment, GLHA and Lowell House are, they have their Massachusetts Controlled Substances registration, so we can order bulk Naloxone whenever needed. So yeah, if you call us, also, we'll be going out regularly to just make sure that there's four kits in here at all times.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson. Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was the easiest motion I had to make because Devin said it so eloquently. There's nothing left for me to say. I'm very proud of her. She does a great job, along with the two young ladies that are here, Jen and Gianna. Gianna, they go out and they save lives every day. I know they're embarrassed for me to say it, but they wouldn't promote themselves, but I'm promoting them. They do a tremendous job. I see it firsthand. This is another instrument in the mix to try to save lives. If it's any consolation, the Board of Parks and the Board of Health both approved these boxes in key locations, and I would suggest that a map of all the areas of high drug activity be used to determine where these boxes should be placed, such as back central area, South Common, as you heard, downtown, Diega. So this is a good thing, and I'm very proud that people thought enough to me to bring this forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Just a couple of quick questions. I was a kid once, so I'm just trying to think like a kid. If a kid breaks into that, what happens if they do something with it? Is it in a locked area in that box? Can it be broken, and a child get into it, or a young kid who's at the skateboard park? And what would happen if they got into it and used some of the stuff? What is actually in that kit?
So they are secured, and they could be placed high enough off the ground so that young kids couldn't reach it. But the thing is with the Naloxone is that if you do administer it to someone who isn't overdosing, it has no adverse effects on the person, the way that your opioid brain receptors, it wouldn't unblock or block anything, so you would be fine.
So would it be a drug going into a child? Because the children, like, take Calorie Park. They're up on the roofs throwing signals. They can get to almost anything you want. So I'm just trying to figure out if that gets broken into, is it a drug that would go into a child? Or what is actually there? Because you just said narcotic. So is it a narcotic that would go into a child if it was broken into, and they grab something? I'm just trying to get educated on it.
So Naloxone only affects opiates. It attaches to opiate receptors and kicks opioids off those opiate receptors. It's not a narcotic. It would be an antagonist. So there's no effects, other than if someone had an opiate in their system.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Yem.
I just want to say thank you to the three ladies who dedicate their life to save others. This is very noble, and I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is that a two-milligram amount of four?
Right now, they're four.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for being here. On favor, see eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. Since we're on the suspension of the rules, any other motions here that have registered speaker? And how about just motion in general that any member want to move up the agenda? Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rule to take up a following motion, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Yem's making a motion to suspend the rule to make a motion on the floor, seconded by Counselor Scott. Counselor Yem.
Through you, Mr. Mayor and the manager, to the Madam Solicitor, to draft a resolution to declare the City of Lowell an abortion rights sanctuary city. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion seconded by Counselor Scott. Counselor Scott, you have a comment?
I would just like to speak and just support Counselor Yem's motion. I think it's important for us to make a statement on something that's very important to our constituents, our residents. I think if we can refer to the Health Department as well, get their input. as well, um, get their input on it. Um, I think it's important for us as a city to show that we respect a person's right to bodily autonomy um and access to healthcare that they need in the city. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So Councilor Yam, I missed some wording on your motion. Was that to refer to the Health Department to draft up a uh or the Law-
To the Law Department.
A law department and the Health Department?
Both, yes.
Both, okay. Um, any other comments or question? Councilor Janes, not on that one. Um, all, sounds like everybody's in favor of this. Um, all in favor say aye. Opposed say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. Councilor Janes?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, while we're under suspension of the rules, I would like to ask uh the council to consider a time-sensitive resolution that I've prepared. Uh, before I begin, first I want to apologize to any member of the public who is unable to be here tonight to speak on this. It's an important issue and I understand the passion that people have for this. Um, this resolution is a reaction to the events of last Friday, June twenty-fourth, and as a result, it couldn't be added to tonight's agenda in time. But as time is an issue here, waiting two weeks to discuss this would likely be too late to have an impact. As we're all aware, the Supreme Court of the United States handed down their decision in Jobs versus Jackson Women's Health this past Friday. In this decision, the Supreme Court overturned Roe v. Wade decision from nineteen-seventy-three. In doing so, they literally turned the clocks back fifty years when it comes to reproductive rights in the United States. While abortion remains legal here in the Commonwealth, residents of many other states find themselves in a confusing, evolving situation with regard to their reproductive rights. With this in mind, Governor Charlie Baker issued Executive Order six-hundred on Friday, shortly after the decision was released by the Supreme Court. The executive order is designed to protect access to reproductive healthcare services in the Commonwealth. With the impending end of the legislative session on July thirty-first, it is imperative that the state legislature codify this executive order into law without delay, so that these measures will be protected from a future administration that may seek to end them. One way the legislature could achieve this goal is to pass H dot four-nine-three-zero, an act expanding protections for reproductive rights, which was introduced just today. This resolution here does not address a specific act, but rather just codifying the Friday's executive order. Here's the resolution I present to the council for consideration. There's a copy on everyone's desk. Whereas, on December twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, the Massachusetts Legislature codified Roe v. Wade into state law by passing legislation that secures the right to abortion in Massachusetts. And whereas, on June twenty-fourth, two, twenty-two, the U.S. Supreme Court issued a decision in the case Dobbs versus Jackson's Women's Health Organization overturning the landmark Roe v. Wade decision that has protected the freedom to seek an abortion since nineteen-seventy-three. And whereas, on June twenty-fourth, twenty-two, Massachusetts Governor Charlie Baker issued Executive Order number six-hundred protecting access to reproductive healthcare services in the Commonwealth, which prohibits Massachusetts from assisting states in pursuing criminal charges against abortion providers and seekers in Massachusetts. And whereas, the Lowell City Council recognizes that abortion is healthcare and supports the right to abortion and other forms of reproductive healthcare, the Lowell City Council calls on the state legislature to codify Executive Order number six-hundred enshrining protections for abortion providers and seekers into state law. Thank you.
Motion on the floor by Councilor Janes to adopt the resolution which the councilor just uh read, second by Councilor Scott. Any comments or discussion by anyone, any members? Here none. All in favor say aye. Have we got a roll call on this one? Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Councilor Gish here.
Yes.
Councilor Janes?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mose here?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Roy?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yam?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Eleven years.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Through you to the manager, uh, could I ask that your office prepare letters, including the text of this resolution, and send them to all members of our state delegation, as well as the leadership on Beacon Hill?
Yes, I will make that happen.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Any more suspension of rules request? Here none. We'll now go to uh where we left off in the unfinished business. These were the uh the motions that were not discussed uh from the previous meeting. Uh, Mr. Manager, do you have any comment before we start?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the members. Uh, to some of the members here, mostly a few of the councils, we had taken the liberty. Unfortunately, I'd put um some of these amendments in the wrong, the wrong order, so we did uh answer some of them. But I want to let you know that we'll take any and all information back unless you're happy with the response. Uh, so once again, uh, this is on me. We uh, I put this into the wrong file and um we had many of the folks uh in the city working on some of these motions prior to being heard. So I just want to let you know, uh, that was my mistake and we'll uh, we'll take them back after you're done, done speaking with them if you'd like us to.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just given the, the length of tonight's agenda and also understanding that many of these have, have been addressed, I'll just make the uh motion to bundle four-one through four-seventeen and um if, if any council wants to, wishes to speak on any particular motion, obviously that's fine, but uh I move that, we bundle four-one through four-seventeen.
Excellent motion on the floor by Councilor Drinkwater to bundle four-point-one through four, four-point-seventeen.
Second.
Second by Councilor Gish here. Um, all in favor, and you are welcome to speak if anybody wants to speak on any one of them.
So, Mr. Mayor, what are we doing here? So you're just gonna skip all the motions again for the second meeting in a row?
You, you are welcome to speak on any of the uh, any of the motions if you want.
I get it, but I mean, it's a city council meeting where motions are filed based on what residents ask us to do and just to take seventeen of them and just move them aside to, for a time constraint. I don't think it's the right way to do it. It's just my opinion. I prefer to start with four-point-one and work our way down.
Okay, so uh with the uh, your, your comment, Councilor Roy, um, the motion to bundle has a second. I'm going to ask for a roll call. Um, after it's passed, now we can discuss any motions that you would like to uh bring forward. Councilor Gish here?
Mr. Mayor, the, the only thing, and I agree with Councilor Roy and Councilor Drinkwater because it got confusing. So some things are gonna be here that we're gonna speak on, but we wrote them under the motion responses, so it, it really got confusing and, and I agree with the manager, what he said. So I don't know, are we gonna read all the motions and then also their responses afterwards? Because I wrote them under motion responses, not under the motions, because I just figured if it's already been responded to, we're just gonna talk under the motion responses. That's where the confusion comes in for me, Councilor Roy. And I, I do agree, like Councilor Roy said, we, we should go through all of them. Um, I guess we can just say four-one, does anyone want to speak and go from there? I, I don't know.
Well, Councilor Gish here, you second the motion to, to bundle. Are you retracting that second?
Well, it's, it's not just the bundle. He, the maker of the motion, I believe, said that if anybody wanted to speak on any one of them or anybody wanted to waive what they put there, they can just waive it. So I, I believe that, and I'll, I'll defer to the maker of the motion.
Okay, Councilor Drinkwater?
Honestly, th- this is sort of like a six of one, half dozen of the other. I was kinda trying to save the time of like reading each individual motion, Mr. Mayor, but um I, I don't feel strongly either way. Anybody, we can always do it the old-fashioned way of letting the motion speak for themselves after you, after you read them. So, you know, I'm gonna withdraw the motion and we'll just go through one by one.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor. I was also retracting my comment, being a good motion on the floor as well. We'll start with four unfinished business, four-point-one, Councilor Scott, Councilor Roy, Councilor Robinson, request City Manager have the DPD look into ordinance to increase cap for marijuana dispensaries. Any comment by maker of the motions? And Councilor Robinson?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, this, no, this wasn't answered in, in the form of a response, correct? No. So um, this is one of those issues that we've been looking at. The revenue's there. Um, we have sunset clauses coming up and I believe th- this probably belongs in um a subcommittee for further discussion. So, I don't know if I can make the motion to refer to a cannabis subcommittee?
Motion to refer to cannabis subcommittee, second by Councilor Noon. Councilor Roy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I agree with Councilor Robinson's motion to a subcommittee. I think we do have that. Um, you know, I think the subcommittee looks for a couple of different things. So actually the revenue coming in to the city, um, tax-wise, what um money is going into um the fund set up by Councilor Noon, uh, with his motion made a couple of years ago. Uh, and then look at the possibility of different locations in the city um that could um under zoning have a, a dispensary uh going forward. I think with the dispensaries we have now has proven to be um safe, uh run uh very well. Uh, so um, I think that, and, and they're moneymakers for the city. So, uh, hopefully going forward, we can look at ways uh to increase uh the cap. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. All in favor say aye. Opposed say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. Four-point-two, Councilor Scott, request City Manager provide a report of the energy output that has been generated from each of the city's solar sites and whether they are all performing above expectations, second by Councilor Yam. Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll actually, um, this motion speaks for itself. This came forward from a constituent and going forward, actually, if we could bundle four-point-three to four-point-eight of my motions, I'd appreciate it.
Four-point-three, uh, motion by Councilor Scott to bundle four-point-two through four-point-eight. Second by Councilor Robinson. All in favor say aye. Opposed say no, the ayes have it, motions carry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, they've all been brought forward from constituents um with either suggestions for uh cost savings or questions that they had that they would like an answer to. Um, and then there was also one about the um dashboard that they were looking for, just in the interest of transparency. But I'll wait for the responses to speak more about them. Some of them are already answered tonight. Thank you.
Motion four-point-nine, Councilor Mose here, request City Manager find ways and means to repair the cement walkway around the entrances to the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, especially the handicap walkway entrance, which is the, which is in dire need of repairs, second by Councilor Janes. Councilor Mose here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is very important to me. I was at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium and I looked down and seen all the cement that was turning like into, I don't know, sand. It was crumbling. It's been there such a long time or perhaps it wasn't mixed properly to stay there for years and years. Uh, I, I just was taken aback by the fact that at any given point along the path, you could trip. And how ironic it was that the path leading up the ramp into the auditorium by way of handicap accessibility was so full of pivots in the ground. A normal walking, regular person could trip, never mind a handicap person. I was taken aback by that. So I'm asking, if we do anything, let's please redo the, the places that needed and make that a nice, smooth walkway so that we don't have to see in our packet next week a lawsuit, a claim for injury to falling at, at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. So that's the gist of this motion and I think it's very important. And I think money was appropriated for that to begin. Um, so I'm, it's not a question of money. So I, I, I think it's very important. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here none. All in favor say aye. Opposed say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. Four-point-ten, Councilor Roy, request City Manager have the DPD and the LPD look into feasibility of a citywide twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, second by Councilor Gish here. Councilor Roy?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, this is one of the motions that actually has a response to it. Um, one of the reasons behind the motion being filed, uh, just, you know, in Petecville was Vonnham Ave, right? Where there's different um rates of speed, you know, from start to finish. Um, I know there are other streets, you know, like Stevens Street or, you know, Bridge Street at certain points in time. Um, you know, is it easier to adopt a citywide twenty-five mile per hour speed limit? Um, you know, speed has been a major uh concern in the city uh for some time. Um, I know there are some roadways that go through the city that are state-owned that we don't control, I'm understanding that. Um, but just in reading the report, uh, it looks like they're gonna adopt a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit just downtown. Um, so I'm curious, is this gonna let everything else stand citywide or how are we gonna go about doing it? If you want to take the motion response back and come back again in a couple of weeks, that, that's fine as well. Um, but I think the main purpose of the motion being filed was, um, you know, the, the main roadways in the city, which, which speed is uh an unquestioned problem. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, you want to take it up now? Okay. Councilor Gish here?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Could we combine motion response S with this at the same time and just do both at the same time? So we don't have to go with motion response S?
Which, which number?
S, as in Sam? Cause that's what the response I think Councilor Roy is referring to.
Yes. Absolutely. So, um, Councilor Gish here, motion to take motion response S out of order to be discussed right now, second by Councilor Drinkwater. Councilor Gish here?
I, I didn't know the maker of the motion's intent to the motion, but I, I think it's an unbelievable one because back in two thousand seventeen, the state came out and said that you can lower the speed limit in condensed areas. And I, I think it's a great idea for the city to, to adopt this. Uh, my only question would be is if you adopted this, um, and it doesn't change roadways like Stevens Street, as the maker of the motion had said, Councilor Roy. But what it does do is it lowers the uh speed limit in highly dense areas that have not been um subjected to a, a speed limit yet. So those areas would now become twenty-five miles an hour and we hear it all the time about speed in neighborhoods and stuff like that. So this would actually lower it and, and give us more power to do it. But my only question to it is, do we have to post it all the incoming roads to the city stating that that is the intent? Because I've seen other communities where you pull up to the, and, and I enforced this at one point, I put up the signs for this, that says that within the city limits, if there is nothing posted, then the um speed limit would be twenty-five. Does that have to be posted at all entrances if this is adopted?
Through Mr. Manager to uh Ms. McCall?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Uh, it is recommended that we would have to change the, the signage. And I think we would want to, at the very least, inform people where it's not posted, it's twenty-five miles per hour. Um, I did see, see the Superintendent of Police on this motion response, but we discussed um additional concerns that we would like to discuss with the City Council Public Safety Subcommittee before we formally opt in citywide, because we do think signage is really important. It's also gonna have a cost associated with it. Um, and then Superintendent Gullner also did mention that there potentially could be unintended consequences should someone get in an accident and something terrible happened and the speed limit's twenty-five. So we would request, um, Councilor Roy had a couple of questions tonight that weren't addressed in the motion response. I got ahead of myself, so I'd like the opportunity to address that, but we also recommend a referral for, for the discussion at a subcommittee, if the council.
Because those signs, as you go to put them up, they have to say thickly settled speed limit citywide, and then it would say unless otherwise posted. And, and it does get covered by state law, so I would think that the city solicitor could definitely weigh in on that going forward. But I think it does make a lot of sense when you start looking at other communities. And a lot of people are talking about downtown. I, I don't know that many people go over twenty-five miles an hour downtown, but maybe they do. I, I'm not down there, so as I look over and, and see people who are downtown. But when, when you look at some of these neighborhoods, we just went to Highland Ave and had a discussion over there and, you know, they were talking about lowering the speed limit when we just looked up at the sign from thirty to twenty-five. So I think that those are residents' requests and, and I don't know that you can separate them out into each street like that, like um some people would like to do. Um, I, I just think the citywide, and, and I would uh agree with sending it off to a subcommittee. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I too am in agreement that this is a good move for the city. And I think that, uh, you know, we should certainly take a look at where we should implement it and not just downtown. Um, there's a lot of areas in the city where I think a drop from an unposted thirty, as is state law right now, to an unposted twenty-five make the difference between somebody be able to, being able to stop if a kid darts out in the street in a crosswalk, chasing a ball, that kind of thing. Um, that five miles an hour can make a difference. So I think it's a, I think it's a good motion. I think it's a good motion response and uh I'll make the motion to kick it to the Public Safety Subcommittee for further discussion.
A second by Councilor Gish here. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Opposed say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. We now go to four-point-eleven, Councilor Roy, request City Manager set a new school building committee, second by Councilor Robinson. Councilor Roy?
I think, Mr. Mayor, this um has come about a couple of different reasons. First off is that uh we're done with phase one almost now, now moving on to phase two. Uh, and secondly, and probably more importantly, is uh just the atrocious attendance uh of the school building committee. Um, and, you know, it's time to get people in there um that, that wanna be part of the process. And, you know, it's time to get people in there that want to be part of the process and that have a love running for the city before the public school system. And hopefully, Mr. Manager, I'm sure you wouldn't have a problem with finding a committee that has those desires. And, you know, one of the reasons why I wanted to go through these motions tonight, Mr. Mayor, was I think this is also a little bit time sensitive. There are some upcoming meetings and events in regards to the Lowell High School project. So I would hope that we can get that done. Thank you.
Any other comments? Council Robinson?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with this. This is something Councilor Gishia and myself spoke about in the past as well. I think, you know, with the transitional period, kinda give it a shot. It seemed like we had heavy attendance when it was a hot button issue coming up at the council floor, and then it's back to business as usual. So I think we need to take a look at the school building committee. Thank you.
Any other comments here on the face of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion 4.12, Councilor Yam, request city manager have the appropriate department update the council on the parking kiosk and parking enforcement. Second by Council Robinson again. Councilor Yam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Ryan, the, for the great report. And I'm happy to hear that in addition to, to new kiosks and additional staff to take care of the parking, to see that there is a person that is hired to hear the, to appeal the parking ticket. And this has been an issue by, a lot of complaint by the residents who may not have access to the computer or does not know how to appeal online. I myself receive a ticket while I'm going to find a workable kiosk. The young lady parking officer told me that I can appeal online, which I did. And luckily, three months later, I was okay to get, don't have to pay. But without having a person, you know, in-person appeal, I think this is, it's an issue. But now I'm glad to hear that. And number two, I hope that we get a new kiosk that, that also, that using solar to also generating power for the, for the kiosk. In addition, I'm hoping that we would also use a, a certain app that are widely used by Boston, similar to Boston. And I went to Worcester, they use the same kind of app. So this way, all the visitor that come to Lowell will be, you know, using the same apps that are really kind of all interconnected. And again, thank you, Mr. Ryan, for a great report.
Councilor Gishia.
Can we combine motion response D with this? Because it's the.
Yes.
Motion response E.
D as in dog?
E, David. Okay. Motion by Councilor Gishia to move, motion response D, out of order, which is the parking kiosk and parking enforcement.
No, that's the response.
Second by Councilor Mosia.
That was the response, Mr. Mayor, to his motion, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we gonna discuss it again?
Well, it's up.
No, we're not discussing it again.
Well, we just bring it up and get rid of, by bringing up with the motion, we, in a way, we don't have to discuss that item when we go through the motion response. So we're taking it off the agenda as completing it. Councilor Gishia?
Just on the motion response, is the parking director here?
Yes.
I just have a question on staffing levels. Do we currently use a meter reader to fill in as office help daily?
We do, yes. Yes, we do.
So shouldn't we have an office person in there and put the person back out on the road?
Absolutely. And that was just approved in this to pass budget. And so next month, I'll be hiring a person to come into the office and putting an officer back out on the street.
Oh, I thought the response said, and I could be wrong.
And I'm also hiring, I also have another opening. So I hope to have two more additional offices out there.
Okay, so there's one in the office that will go out on the road, and then there's a new one being hired that's gonna go out on the road and there'll be an office person going in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. I'm glad that this is on everyone's radar. I do see that they hired an experienced contractor to provide services for municipal hearings. I have a constituent that's been reaching out though, and is there any kind of process for a situation that keeps happening? I have a constituent that goes to chiropractic on Central Street. They've been ticketed two times and pretty much daily, they're sending screenshots of kiosks along that corridor. I know we're struggling to keep what we can online for the time being, but is, do you have any recommendations? Someone that, that's going to a downtown business regularly, doctor's appointment, something along those lines? If they're continuously running into this issue, is there any way they can kinda, instead of waiting and having multiple tickets to fight?
I don't know the exact issue, but if they are parking on a marked spot on Central Street, that's a two-hour spot, my officer would come by. And in the report, I mentioned chalking, but it should be taking a timestamp. And we take a timestamp, and if that person has parked longer than two hours, then they probably will get a ticket.
No, the, these are 45-minute medical appointments, but it's, I mean, I have multiple pictures of.
Yeah, I would have to look at the space and just, if you want to send me that, I can absolutely take a look at it and get back to you and understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Council Leahy?
Sure. Which department, when we put the new kiosk in it, we, does the parking department or assigned it, who straightens the posts out for the?
My hope is that we don't have the posts. We use pay by plate. So the people, the customers will put their license plate number into the kiosk or the app, and that's how we'll check that. And I'm hopeful that we can get rid of all the meter pulls.
All right. So if we pull all the meters out though, are we gonna, are we gonna paint spaces then? We simultaneously, we should?
That would be, you know, that's another decision we'll have to make when we get there, because if we don't paint, then we can actually park a few more cars on every street, which would mean a little more income. Whereas if we paint, paint the, keep painting, then we're restricting ourselves. There are some streets that could fit one or two more cars each.
I just don't want like Councilor Janess to pull right up and then I'm stuck for two hours because he's at another appointment and.
You have a pickup truck, back him, back right over.
All right, just make sure we're good. Thank you.
Councilor Mosia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Terry Ryan. And one of the responses about the parking fees, it, it says two separate groups participate in the group rate options. What two groups are they?
We have a Gallagher, Kavanaugh have a, have a, have a group rate. And we also have the Chamber of Commerce has a group rate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Council Scott?
Just one quick question. I know you're hiring another enforcement person, you said. Is that just in the downtown or do they handle parking enforcement in the neighborhoods at all too? Like, I've been getting a lot of complaints in Sacred Heart about parking at street corners or in crosswalks. Is that your department that handles that or?
We do downtown, north and south campus. And the five offices will rotate through the different zones. So they spend about three weeks in each zone so that the parkers don't get used to us and we don't get used to the parkers. So when we do hire, you know, we'll have a full complement to fill the five zones.
Okay, thank you.
We don't go out to outside of the downtown except for U Lowell and the residential zones of the city, where there is residential parking.
So that's all the police department that they would contact or is that, who would handle complaints like that?
Outside of where I enforce, that would go to the police department.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here on, even though we have an answer to this motion request, we still have to pass this motion. On the face of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. The next one is my motion, which was to request city manager explore installation of a security camera in Cambori Town. I, I did not have a motion response per se, but I do have an answer from the chief already. Thank you, chief, for, for the information. Having that information, I now will discuss with the city manager, so I'm gonna withdraw this motion. Motion 4.4, 4.14, my motion request city manager look to increase community policing in Cambori Town and Cappo Square. And I, I have a motion response to this one, which is motion response I. So I need a motion to bring item I out of order to discuss with 4.14 by Councilor Yam, second by Councilor Scott. So motion 4.14 was to, again, request city manager look to, the motion response to that. So I just want to thank, we have a second by Council Scott. Just want to thank the chief, the deputy chief and Captain Kiltmon for conducting the neighborhood meeting on a sidewalk. Chief, if you'd like to give us a brief summary of what happened?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on the 21st of June, we held a sidewalk meeting in the area of Middlesex Branch by Clemente Park in response to some recent activity and some concerns from the, that the mayor had brought forward as well. We had a sidewalk meeting with the, some of the residents, business community, the mayor, and some staff members from the police department. Some concerns were raised regarding the Clemente Park, some homeless issues. We determined that there was a hole in the fence, there's some trees that need to be cut back to increase some lighting and to also increase the visibility of some cameras in the area. So the captain in charge of that sector will be working with the city services to have those issues remedied. I think the litter crew cleaned the park this past weekend, so that cleaned some of the issues up there. As the mayor had discussed, that we looked into the feasibility of adding some additional city camera to the area. We received a estimate for that this morning and I forwarded that to the mayor as well. We're gonna be increasing our foot patrols on Friday and Saturday evenings, which we determined was one of the main concerns of the community and the business owners. So we'll have some foot patrols using staffing grant money on Friday and Saturdays until the parks close. What we've been doing recently as well is using motor patrols in the city to add some additional offices to different areas. So we're going to add the Middlesex Branch, Clemente Park area to that patrol as well. So they'll cover that area as well as the downtown and some other major concerns. Counselor?
Councilor Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the chief. Chief, I thought the Clemente Park, the, on the top of the concession stand, there's already camera there.
There's a, I know there's a camera in the park, but there were some issues with some trees blocking view that we're going to cut back. But that camera doesn't cover the area of Paylin, Middlesex and Branch. So the mayor and the concerns of the business owners in that area was to have more coverage with the city camera on the streets, the, the park and where the monument is that was at the intersection of Middlesex and Branch.
Well, I, I do agree, the more the mayor, so thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, chief, regarding a great report. My family and I attend the birthday party at the restaurant this past Saturday, and we noticed that there's the ambulance and the police present. There must be something going on in that park. And I would also request Mr. Mayor through, through Mr. Manager to maybe have the park department to clean up the tree, as the chief indicated, because they're overgrown and it's blocked the camera. Plus, we want to be able to allow the police to see it from the street on Middlesex Street to the park. So again, thank you, chief, for a great report and for getting on top of that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could just ask one more question. This is a great motion, but are there plans for cameras in any other areas right now? I'm just thinking of areas that I've received a lot of calls about, like around Jay's Food Store and back central and just other hot button areas. Are there any plans in the works right now for those?
So financially, right, right now, we had finished a half a million dollar grant this past year on video cameras in the city. And there was a plan that was laid out in terms of hotspot areas of the city that were covered. There are numerous cameras. I don't have the exact location of all the cameras in the city. There is plans to look into grant funding to add some additional cameras as well in the, in, in this coming year. And we've talked with the manager about increasing especially some activity in, around that Jay's Food Store area as well. I'm not sure exactly where the camera is, but there are cameras in that Hamilton Canal District and lower Middlesex Appleton Street. We also use private cameras, housing and other entities.
Thank you.
Council Yam?
Just a quick follow-up to the chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the camera, who controlled the footage and how long do we, do the police depart, is the police department control the, the footage and, or who?
City MIS and the police department. The police department has the ability to view the cameras?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, chief.
Council Leahy?
Thank you. Chief, we still take advantage of the van, right? We still have the van that we park and that has cameras in it or?
So we don't, we, we don't have that van anymore because of the, the equipment was antiquated and it just wasn't working and the amount of money to update that van, it was not prudent at the time.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Mayor.
Council Nunez?
One last question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the chief. Any update on the guy to the suspect that damaged the statue?
We discussed, Councilor, at the meeting, the suspect has been charged through a criminal application with the district court, and they'll be summoned to court.
Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. Yeah, great motion. I'd like to echo what Councilor Scott said. In, in light of the recent incidences over at South Carmen in particular, with the kids being present, I think between Jay's Food Store and the South Carmen area, prime locations. So if there are other funding mechanisms for cameras to expand upon this, I think we need to take a hard look at that area. Thank you.
No other comment? Council Leahy?
Just one other comment. So could I just make a quick motion that we ask the manager to look into grants or any other way we could replace that mobile van unit then? Let's see if we can try to find out a way to replace that and bring that back. So, yeah.
We could look into how much it would cost to purchase a van and the equipment. You're talking about the marked one that said video.
Yeah, maybe we get some private help to help donate or defer the costs or, so we'll look into a way to do that, so.
We can definitely look.
All right, just need a second.
Motion on the floor by Council Leahy, second by Councilor Mosia. Any other comments, questions? On the face of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. I just want to thank chief again and your team for the motion response. Good, good answers. And in addition to responding in the paperwork, also responding in person to the sidewalk meeting. I appreciate that. On the face of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Now go to motion 4.15. My motion request city manager have proper department look into improving the park playground next to the Greenheart School, second by Councilor Janess. If this objection, just a quick explanation on this, on this motion. Basically, there's a small park on the Greenheart School playground. And the Greenheart School, they really have no green space, no grass, really, it's all concrete. The only, I guess, healthy area for the kids to place a small little park on, on the concrete playground. But all the equipments there are broken. And if the city can look into that park, maybe do a redesign of that small area, but I think with proper design, it could really enhance the healthiness, the beauty of that playground for, for the kids there. Any other comments, question? Council Robinson?
Thank you. Yeah, Greenhouse, I've been grabbed by quite a few constituents as well, parents or students that attend. It's a major heat island, that whole area, where the kids go out for recess. So any help would be greatly appreciated over there. Thank you.
Council Leahy?
Through you to the manager, whoever knows, is that school, is that a school playground or is that a city playground? Because I know last year, the schools replaced a lot of equipment and that should have been on their list if it was school.
Mr. Mayor?
That is a school playground, Councilor.
All right, so that should be, we should check into that, because last year, we supposed, we spent a lot of money replacing playground equipment. And if that's damaged, it should have been on the list. So we should check that out. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here on, on the face of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Motion 4.16, request city manager have proper department look into runoff water on Boulevard Street that has damaged the road, second by Councilor Mosia. The motion speaks for itself. that has damaged the road, second by Councillor Mercier. The motion speaks for itself. On favor, I post say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. Motion four point seventeen, my motion request city manager have property department review and consider applying for the U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for all SSA SS4A grants, which can be used to support planning, infrastructure, behavioral and operational initiatives to prevent death and serious injury on roads and streets involving all roadway users and has a per- award ceiling of fifty million dollars for 2022. And there was a motion response. Let me look for it real quick.
R, Mr. Mayor?
Was it R? Motion response, R, also like to, so that motion is second by Councillor Nguyen and also Councillor Nguyen, motion to move motion response R up the agenda to discuss along with, with the motion. Second by Councillor Robinson. The motion speaks for itself. Any other comments or question? Thank you, Mr. Manager, for the motion response, and I kind of like your forward thinking. I can put in my motion on Friday and get the response by Tuesday. So if you can continue to do that with my motions, I would love it. That was the, on favor, I post say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. We now go to five communications from city manager, motion responses. I'm probably going to need help with some of the members, because we took a lot of this motion response to go with the motions from last week. So we'll start with A, motion response, Lowell contributions to community groups flag raising. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. Yeah, this, I spoke to the law department on this. I was unaware. I don't know if, maybe through you to the solicitor, if you'd mind just touching on what this legal kind of hurdle or roadblock to do in these kind of events is, so at least the viewing audience and the public is aware. Thank you.
Madam Solicitor?
Sure. Excuse me. We, so we have to abide by the anti-Aid Amendment. And as I noted in the opinion, essentially the anti-Aid Amendment would prevent the city from transferring money to essentially private third parties. There are certain circumstances in which that can be done. However, in this particular case, given what the objectives were, there's also an alternative way to do it, and that would be for the city to establish a fund, and I think the CFO can, can speak to that, and one really already exists. And if residents have a, have a flag that they would like to have a ceremony, flag raising ceremony, and we don't happen to have that flag, this fund can be used to, to purchase the flag and hopefully accomplish the exact same goal that the counselor had in bringing this forward, as well as other ceremonies related to flag raisings.
Thank you very much. Could I at least have the city explore establishing the fund along the legal perimeters as a result of this initial motion?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. We do have the Equity Inclusion Fund, which is probably the fund we would utilize if people needed a flag or something to that effect. We could, we could use it there.
Okay, thank you.
No other comments. We now go to B, motion response, tax title, sales auctions. Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another motion that was brought to me by a resident that asked me to look into why we hadn't done a tax title auction since 2019, and the response answered that. And I'm just, my only question would be, how much money do we have, like a typical bundle like that when there's 500 properties and back taxes right now?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. We try not to guess on that, just simply because we're not quite sure. I mean, I'd look to the city solicitor on that as well. We do have a number of what's going to be taken, what's not going to be taken. I would hesitate to guess, because if we put a number on it and it became short, that would be a concern that I would have.
I agree. The, the other thing to take, to keep in mind is, once we start going through the process of establishing a lien auction sale, the, at least what had been the course of action is that residents are very familiar with it, and as a result, many of these don't go to lien auction sale anymore. And, and the taxes are satisfied, residents come in, pay up. And, and also, as I noted in there, it should be known that there's a number of exemptions from veterans to elderly, hardship, widow, et cetera. And Lowell does not include anyone that's getting an exemption in this lien auction sale. So it's been a very successful program since it's been initiated, and we look forward to getting it up and running again. And the manager's, it's been top on his list.
Yes, I saw that you, you don't take any, any auctions for those properties, which is very good. It's just my, my question was just around, it, over three years, I would think there's a substantial amount outstanding. And it's actually a good thing, right, if they pay before you have to take their property? Because the last thing we want to do is take the property. We just want to, you know, be made whole. So it's good that we're moving forward with this again this year. Thank you.
Councillor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Madam Solicitor. The question I have would be, when my name is published in the local newspaper that I'm behind on the tax bill and my, the tax will be auctioned off or sold off, do I have, as a homeowner who have an outstanding tax, have the rights to redeem it after it got sold? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Sure. So this is a little bit different from the actual taking every year when we do the tax title takings. But with respect to the, to the auction, there are a couple of notices that go out. So we do more in terms of notice than what's required by the statute. And, and secondly, residents can come in and satisfy right up to the morning of the, of the auction. There's also payment plans that are available to residents if they want to enter into that. Also exempt is if somebody has a purchase and sale pending, puts the property on the market. We, we do not disturb that and let that process go forward.
Councillor Yam, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Madam Solicitor. That's, go to the heart of my question, because I know some family cannot come up with the five thousand or nine thousand right off the bat, so they can enter a payment agreement within, with the city to pay off their outstanding, so they can, you know, not to have that sold.
That's right. We work with the treasurer's office and the auditor in her prior position. As the treasurer had, had worked with the law department and as we, as we get these auctions up and rolling.
Thank you.
No other comments. We now go to motion response C, parking fees and garages. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. This came about after speaking to some small business owners. I noticed there is a group rate, requires 20 more employees or passcode holders. We have some small businesses where the employees kind of brought this to my attention. And I see if they bought a monthly passcode, it would be the cheaper alternative. Maybe we can start to try to get some kind of marketing to our small businesses. As a result, try to push these monthly passcodes for businesses that have less than 20 employees. Thank you, and thank you to the parking director for the response.
Councillor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I just have a couple of questions for parking director Ryan, just about the Consumer Price Index and how we actually set rates, because as you look at the report, you say that, and I take it that the Consumer Price Index that we're setting it by must have went up 8.3% this year?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so as we read the budget and we went through the budget, we saw the deficit projected going forward in that department. Are we going up in expenses more than the Consumer Price Indexes? Because it seems like we're going to watch that revenue go into the negative sharply. So obviously, we're expending more than we're taking in. So should we be relooking at this price index and how we set the rates? Because if we're not keeping up with the cost, it makes no sense to even have a, have a set policy based off of the Consumer Index. And that's a concern for me, because we're obviously offsetting it with tax dollars. And we're also looking into seeing, you know, trying to put the trash and everything into enterprise funds also. But if we keep offsetting these things based off of, they're enterprise funds, they should be self-sufficient without having to not only get the Consumer Price Index, but also going back and trying to get some of these other projects. It, it just doesn't look feasible to run this department if we can't keep up with it with the Consumer Price Index. So do you have a, a number of how much, you know, we're increasing in, in expenses percentage-wise? Because as we look at this, it's 8.3, and we're still going in the red. So in my opinion, you're going over 8.3% in expenses.
Expenses.
Increases.
I, I don't have an exact number on that. I, I could look into that and find out where we are in relation to the 8.3. But basically, based on the ordinance, the 8.3 is all I can do.
Yeah, and it's not enough.
And it's not enough. No, even in this tough year, it's not enough.
Yeah, because we offset a lot of it with the ARPA funding. So as, as we start doing that, I'm just questioning the direction we're taking as, as we're going into infrastructure issues and everything. And it's an unfair question to, to put the parking director under and ask you what the percentage increase is. But it's something that everybody should be well aware of as we look at all of these budgets and we see that that's going heavy into the negative, and we set it based off of a Consumer Price Index. So maybe that's something that Mr. Baldwin wants to talk about. I, I don't know, and not to put him on the spot.
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. CFO. Mr. Colonel?
Certainly not on the spot. That's, you know, that's what we do here, Counselor. To your question about the Consumer Price Index, that was a function of how we amended the rate for the parking fees the last time around. There was a comprehensive look at the parking fees in 2018. There was a proposal that was put forward. There was a lot of public outcry, I suppose, against some of the fees that were proposed, and the, the compromise was a much lower increase. And then this, this provision of the ordinance that attached some of the fees, it essentially chained it to the Consumer Price Index. And so the benefit that that has, that was not in place in the ordinance prior, was it did not require fees to be amended every year. It, it would automatically be tied to the Consumer Price Index. So that, that's kind of where the genesis of how this came into play. To your question, Counselor, the major driver of the expenses in the parking enterprise is the debt service. And so what's driving expenditures in the enterprise is the debt service that's come online for the Hamilton Canal Garage. And what the city suffered through the pandemic was not only essentially a, a year plus of very little revenue, not only on the streets, but within the garages. And, you know, we worked, Mr. Ryan worked very closely with some of our arrangements we have with businesses, and some of the other users of the garages, the community college. Everyone was in a very difficult spot. And that, as you mentioned, Counselor, that is why we use some of the revenue loss from ARPA to sustain the operations in the Enterprise Fund. Moving forward, there's been a request from this council to look at the fee schedule again. This is something that we're going to need to look at. In the beginning, as I mentioned, 2018, we proposed a fee that would have covered the debt service on the Hamilton Canal Garage, and it was more than the council was willing to consider at that time. And so, you know, we constrain expenditures in the Enterprise Fund every year. It's a small department. Other than the expenses and the debt service, there's a handful of employees. The major expenses are the contract we have for the management. That is a new contract. Those costs increase for management and security in the garages, but it is the debt service that is the major driver. And as we absorb debt service for the repairs, that this council approved earlier in the fall, as well as the new, the new kiosks, those will continue to add pressure to the budget. And when we bring a, a new proposal to the council, all of those will be taken into consideration. I hope that addresses some of your counsel, your questions, Counselor.
So my question is that with all the infrastructure upgrades and everything, will it cover the cost of what's going on? And I don't see it happening by projections. I see projections going the other way, knowing that we have all these new infrastructure pieces going in place, and we're still seeing the projections go the other way, and the Consumer Price Index is not keeping it up. And I agree with Counselor Robinson that there has to be some kind of way to also bring people downtown and not charge as much. But right now, this doesn't even look like it's feasible at all, even knowing with all the infrastructure upgrades. And there's a lot of infrastructure demands that are going to go on. We still have meters we'll be paying for that are broken and going to be removed, and we'll still be paying for those going forward into future costs. And it's just, it, it's tough to watch as we watch this going. And I just caution this council to understand that this is a challenge for not only you as a CFO, but for all of us to look at all of these residents who are actually paying, and the visitors to downtown, in their costs. So it, it will cost the taxpayer one way or the other. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councillor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier, when Mr. Ryan was up, you mentioned the two groups that have the group rate, Gallagher and Kavanaugh and the Chamber of Commerce. Does the chamber require any kind of membership or anything in order to access that rate? Do you know? There's probably a better question for them.
They just have the 20 people.
Okay.
So that's, and they pay with one check.
But it, it, do you know if that's open to chamber members, like individual businesses that are part of the chamber? Or is that just the employees of the chamber that sell?
That's about all they can handle with their personnel. And, you know, I could not speak for the chamber, but I, I think that's where they could, that's about what they can handle.
Okay, that's fair. Mr. Mayor, through you to Christine McCall. Is there any way there, there might be bandwidth in, say, the Economic Development Office to possibly set up something where these smaller businesses might be able to band together through the Economic Development Office in order to access that group rate? I know that Mr. Ryan doesn't have the, the bandwidth to be able to process the smaller groups. I don't know if Economic Development might be able to, to play in this area and possibly help these small businesses out. It's just an idea. Thanks.
Through the manager to Ms. McCall. You have a comment or?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. The Economic Development Team is comprised of three positions, two of which are vacant right now and not slated to start until the end of the month. We're open to exploring that possibility with the manager that was never considered. I'm not sure if it's possible or legal. I do know part of the challenge with the group rate is, you know, it would be incumbent on businesses to pay on time. And so, I mean, we can look into it and provide a report to the council.
You all set, Councillor Janess?
I'm all set, yes.
Councillor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as I can understand, part of the challenge is that, let's take the courthouse, the Judicial Center. If 20 people there want to join together, they can establish a group rate. That's true, right, Mr. Ryan?
Correct.
Okay, and the fact is, someone has to be designated to collect the fee each month from the 20 people that are organized into this group. Is that right, too?
Correct.
See, that's the problem. Some, nobody wants to get, be responsible for going around collecting it. So that's probably why you only have two groups and you don't have more, because people just don't want that responsibility to collect from each person, you know?
I did have a call from the courthouse this week. Somebody from the courthouse did call to inquire, and I explained it to him, and I put them in touch with Laz Parking to see if we could set something up.
Oh, good, good. Thank you.
Councillor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to directors of park, Mr. Ryan. Have you reached out to or invite the school department and CTI? Maybe they would be interested also to be, you know, on group rate. And if you're looking for someone to be responsible, the least he could do was the superintendent of school can be the collector. And for CTI, the CFO, CEO of the, CI can be a collector, and that's lower, have a group rate, 20. They're, I'm sure they have more than 20 employee.
We do have separate agreements with the school department and the teachers who park at AOT. And we do have an agreement with CTI for their parking also.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Monitor that on a monthly basis.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Here we go. We'll now go to the next motion response. We already have taken up D, so we now go to E, motion response, college stadium track walking for residents. Councillor Gishia?
I just, motion speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Leahy?
I have a comment. Through you to the manager. When we had the whole discussion about putting the high school out there and this and that, it was, we had to go through Article Nine. it was, we had to go through Article 90 or whatever it was. We had to go through Article, whatever it was, 80 or 90.
Article 97.
Yeah. Okay. So, I understand the issues, but it really should be unlocked out there. If it's a park, people should be able to use that. And if we have to have an extra person out there during the day, then we need to, because residents, students, they want to use the fields, they want to use the track. And I thought this, you know, this came up maybe a year or two ago, maybe longer, I don't know, you weren't the manager. But they told me this was going to be open, and I really think it should be. It's
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. I know that Commissioner Byrne is here as well. Currently, right now, I mean, I have not been out there to shake the gate, but it's, I'm being told it is open, with the exception of when someone might be at lunch. And that's, you know, say typically 12 to 1 o'clock. But we're also trying to keep in track that we have the high school going out there, say, for football, track, whatever the case may be. I don't know if that would cause a problem or an issue at that point in time with people walking through the track while there's actually track practice going on. So, that's, you know, that was one of the concerns. Mostly, I believe the children, the high school students, I should say, are out there for 2:30. We also have other challenges that are out there with the, I shouldn't say it's challenges, it's a good thing when we have the Lowell Police Academy out there. So, I think they were trying to set something up that a very normal schedule from 7 to 12. Now, most of the time, it is open. My understanding, it is, it is open. But we also have to take into consideration the high school, the high school is using it as well as the police department and whatnot. But, I mean, the commissioner is here. I don't know if I've stated that correctly, Commissioner?
Yep.
Well, I understand that, but there are locks on the gates, right? There's still locks on the gates?
There's a lock on the gate, but one of the gate entrances is open, and we have the bathroom facilities open for them to use.
Right. I just, I just think we should have a regular, you know, whoever gets there at 7:00 in the morning should unlock the gates. I mean, it's just, I just think the residents, the kids should be able to use it during the school year. I mean, you know, my kids come home and they'll crawl under the fence to get in there to use it, so. And a lot of kids do, so, I mean, we know the
I mean, we have someone there. They open it up at 7:00. They're there, they're working on the fields, they're cutting lawns, they're working on the ball fields. So, there is, there is presence there. And we also have some seasonal workers during this time of the year there as well. So, we do have people there, and we open it. And as the manager said, we are, you know, cautious based on the timeframe that they use, because we give the students at Lowell High School first rights and also Police Academy when it's a good thing when we
Right, and I think most people would be reasonable to that, so. But I'd just like to keep an eye on it, and I think it should be open during the spring and summer and fall, just so people can take advantage of using the fields or whatever they need to do, as long as they're respectful. I mean, you know, so.
I'd leave, counselor, if I can just, Mr. Mayor. There's a permit process to go through, to use, like, the football field or the baseball field through the parks. So, we just don't open it up to anybody that uses it. Obviously, walking the track for recreational use, I think that's a reasonable request, and we do have it open. But I think we just can't open everything to the fields. There's a permitting process, there's a procedure that we have to follow, they go through the border parks, and it gets approved through that.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Here none. We'll now go to the next motion response. F, motion response, snow contractors. Counselor Gissia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. My concern all along is the way that we're plowing the streets. So, as I look at these reports, it's even more alarming that we're watching is, and I think Commissioner Byrne will tell you the same thing, is through the years, and so will Counselor Robinson, through the years, we've watched them go from 10-wheelers and six-wheelers down to contracting out more F-250s and F-350s, which don't push snow. They just will leave you a path in the middle and the side. But I think more of the concern will be discussed in the motion that I put forward about CDL drivers. I think they're having a problem with that, and so is waste management and everything. When you look at the response in the memorandum that we got, you look at, you see there's 42 out of 72 pieces of equipment that are contracted out. 42 are F-250s and F-350s, which is 58% of all rented-out equipment is that. So, it's not going to push back to the will of what this council wants and what the residents are demanding. You're going to get a pushback the first storm, and then after that, it's not going back. So, you're going to see the problems. And it's very hard. I'm sure the commissioner can elaborate more. But when you look at the city side, you see that 64% of their in-house staff is 10-wheelers, six-wheelers and 10-wheelers, which now can do the mains and everything, so it will push back. When we were there years ago, this was a reverse trend. We used to have less pieces of equipment that went out, because there were bigger pieces of equipment and could move snow quicker and further back and maintain that. These are going to be tough and challenging times coming this winter if we don't start securing these pieces of equipment and go out. And I, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Commissioner Byrne, can you just outline to the council, because I think it's an important time, because we're in June. And if we're going to pre-plan all this stuff, you know, normally you talk about yard waste pickup when you're talking in December, so that you can plan for that season coming. And now's the time to try to have this discussion and see if there's ways that we can help or the manager can help, that we can start solving some of these issues. Because every time it snows, this council gets inundated with calls. And it's not just calls about cars parked, it's not pushback to the curb. And these F-350s and F-250s and whatever's there, as you're well aware, don't push the snow back that far. So, if you could just elaborate on the challenges of this, and I thank you for the memo, because as we're highlighting through, we're seeing the percentages go up, because we're just basically filling spots. And one other thing that's very concerning in this report is that we're probably not getting back as many returned drivers. So, every time we come back every year, we have to give them another map. And what I read in the report is there's no training required for anybody who actually uses the plow. So, somebody could, you know, not even know how to tuck a corner in, or even actually go, you know, to driveways and try to push things out. So, I think those are real concerns. If you could just address some of them.
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Byrne.
Mr. Mayor, to the council. So, this report that we presented to you tonight, this is a report from last year. This is a report that kind of gives you an overview of everything that took place during last year, with different packages that went out and a push to bring in outside contractors and also incentive to, you know, apply early and raise the rates. During this process here, in talking to many people and many private contractors and our existing employees that work in the street department, water, wastewater, parks department, that it's a team effort when we go out in these storms. We have a challenge to get these contractors in. We need to incent, have big incentives. We've talked to the management team, the manager, the CFO, the assistant city manager. We've had internal meetings. I've talked to my staff at the DPW. And we're putting packages together within the next month. And we're trying to look at the amount of money that we should be trying to get to these contractors. I think that we can bring some contractors in early. I think we need bigger equipment, as Counselor Gissia talked. And we're having a hard time getting the CDL drivers in our own staff. And there's something that needs to follow over the next couple of months about the CDL drivers. Coming back to the snow issues, I think there's, there is some contractors that want to come back to the city. I think through relationships that we have, they're proud about the city and they want to make improvements. We need to push hard, we need to go out and market, and we need to solicit these contractors to bring them in. And, you know, money's going to pay them, absolutely, but relationships will also help. And we warrant any support from the councilors, that if they have friends and they want to come in and plow for us, and they meet the criteria, and they follow the contracts we put out. We've talked to the law department, we've talked to other people that we're going to push these contracts through and try to motivate some of the contractors. As far as touching on about the training of contractors coming into the city about plowing, we have spotters out there, engineers, people that have plowed in our city, our supervisors, and we watch them. We can understand if they, I mean, back when I was here a while ago, that we watched them, we made sure if they were plowing right, and if they weren't, they were pulled over and talked to. We asked them to go back curb to curb. And I know that a couple of incidents last year, some contractors were asked to be sent home, because they weren't doing a good job. They didn't know how to plow. And they just, they just weren't cut for it. So, we do come across that. We'll monitor it. I think we got some good staff in the city. We got some veterans that are there, that I believe, you know, that can do the job. We're going through our equipment now. We're, we're doing some in-house repairs. We're also going through our sanders, we're going through our plows, where some of them that we can't repair in-house, we're sending them out to get repaired. So, we're starting to prepare for the winter, counselor. And I believe that we'll have packages ready to go, you know, sometime in late July, or earlier. And I'm sure we'll be back before here to let you know that, what we're doing here and how we're presenting these packages to you.
You're all set, Counselor?
Yeah, thank you again, Mayor Chow and Commissioner Byrne.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I look at this report, and to be honest, it screams to me why we're having problems and why we're always up in arms all winter, and our residents are up in arms all winter. We're focusing on money to contractors, first of all. What about our in-house employees? What about training for our in-house employees? We have spotters that keep an eye on contractors. Contractually, spotters aren't allowed to plow. So, you have people with zero experience and a higher pay grade keeping an eye on the people that are plowing. We have a fleet of about four to five mechanics that are responsible for getting all our winter operation equipment ready right now in the middle of peak season for other departments. So, when a mall goes down, these people are tasked with repairing that. Last time I was down there, we have a couple sweepers down waiting on parts. I mean, we are understaffed severely to maintain a fleet the size that we're trying to operate, for one. For two, we have 10 skid stairs under contracted-out equipment. But yet, we have how many employees that hold hoisting hydraulic licenses that we pay for, we reimburse for, we utilize in loaders and every other heavy equipment year-round? We're not prioritizing walkways and bridges anymore. I can see that. That's clear, because we're paying a rate between 100 to 140 an hour, I believe it is, for skid stairs for contractors. And according to this report, it looks like we're bringing in 10 contracted-out skid stairs at that rate, while we own five, six, seven skid stairs in-house of the city that aren't being deployed during winter operations. I don't even see how that makes sense. So, we're overpaying for equipment that we have with trained, skilled professionals in-house. I see parking lots, which were usually secondary and would get done after the snowstorm, being done as priority. I mean, I think we need to take a hard look in-house, the way that we're setting up our snow operations and the way we're utilizing our existing talent, before we start worrying about contractors and how much money we're going to throw to contractors to supplement our workforce. I think the biggest problem with this report, and it's been shown time and time again, is we're not utilizing the personnel that we have correctly to start. Second, we're failing them, because the equipment that they're tasked with is not, there's no way we can keep up with that. And third, if we're going to start looking at increasing pay instead of outside contractors and paying people to keep an eye on these contractors that have never done this kind of work, there's something really broken. And I think that's something that I hope that the manager and operations, chief operations, is going to sit down and address with the commissioner. And, Mr. Commissioner, I understand this is, you're doing God's work over there. I appreciate everything you're doing, but I think we really are at the rate, at the point where we need to break down our winter operations and rebuild, because we have a lot of talented in-house employees that really aren't being used. I mean, just that simple fact of 10 skid stairs at a contracted-out rate are going out in winter operations, but yet none in-house, that's alarming to me. At $140 an hour per piece of equipment, you have 10 contracted skid stairs out, that's $1,400 an hour. We're not, we're not paying, that's not even close to what our operators in-house are getting and our equipment sitting and dry running. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. So, I agree with a lot that Counselor Robinson says. I had some experience with Mr. Byrne back in the 90s, and, you know, no offense, but I've never agreed with these spotters. The spotters should be out plowing. Whoever in charge of a section should be the spotter, not somebody driving around in a car that, quite frankly, you know, I don't know how much interaction there is, because I never had any interaction with spotters, except for the person who I spoke to that was out plowing with me. So, I never agreed with the spotters. I think we should be doing a lot more training in-house, we should have better equipment in-house. And, you know, quite frankly, too, I think that the smaller trucks can do a good job if we get them out there early enough. Some of the private contractors come in, and they're not told how to plow, and before you know it, the snow builds up. And yes, then they can't push back the snowbanks, or we don't do a good enough job of inspecting every storm. And then, again, the snowbanks build up and you can't push them back, and we're doing everything two or three times. And parking lots, too. I mean, I had a 150 truck, and we used to plow school parking lots, no problem. As long as you get to it in time, you can, you can do a big parking lot within an hour. It really doesn't take all day to do a parking lot. So, I think we should let Mr. Byrne give us some suggestions. He has a lot of experience in this, and let's see if we can rearrange and come up with a better system. And I think we'll all benefit from it. So, thank you.
Mr. Byrne?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Robinson. On the notion that you talked about skid stairs, I believe that there might be a mis-situation here on my memo here to you, and I apologize, that there is skid stairs that we use in our, in our area. So, I don't know the number. I will get, I can respond back to that, your motion, the motion or the request that you have, and I can make some corrections there. So, I know we're using skid stairs in-house, and I know that I sat down with my staff, and maybe we missed in the memo that I sent you, and I apologize, and I'll get that information to you at the next meeting.
Counselor Gissia, still have a comment?
Just one comment, is every community has spotters, unless they have GPS on people. So, if you're going to put GPS on the vehicles, then I would agree with Counselor Leahy, what he's telling you. But if there's no GPS, when you have contractors out there, they start doing driveways in other places instead of being where they are. So, the spotters absolutely work well, kind of controlling the situation. But I do recommend that GPS can take their place, and it's a better system when somebody calls. The commissioner can be at his desk. In the last place I worked, that's what happened. People would call, you'd be at your desk, and they'd say you didn't hit this street. And we would say, at this time, that truck went down this street. So, it saves a lot of effort for people to go back and look, where you can do it rapidly while somebody's on the phone. So, GPS is one way of looking at everything, but when you start adding GPS to contractors, you start having a harder time getting the contractors to come in, because now they feel as though they're being watched. And some of the contractors do not like that to be done for certain reasons. But I don't disagree with Counselor Leahy, what he's saying. I just think that if you're going to do that, don't do it without being monitored some way.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Gissia that most communities do use spotters. Some communities have actually moved to, and this was something we discussed years ago. Instead of utilizing some of the higher-paid employees of the city that don't necessarily have this expertise, why don't we lean on our foremen that we're paying daily to supervise? So, we have, say, specialists and foremen that are out there with the plows on the ground that could be utilized as spotters, because they know the route like the back of their hand. Some of these employees have been there for 20, 30 years. And I think they've proven themselves that they're trustworthy to supervise and they work well with others. I think, again, I think we could be a lot more effective, and I think we can do a lot better with what we have. we can do a lot better with what we have existing before we start looking to branch out and bring others into the fold. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Sure. Just, and that's what my whole point is. Let the foreman be the spotters because they're out there. And it's a very easy system. You meet up every three hours, and the foreman tells you what looks good, what doesn't look good. And there's no getting around it. You can't hide. The foreman's on the main roads. He's checking it out. If you're out not doing your job, then he knows. And there's no need to have, you know, engineers as spotters. It should be the foreman on the street that's driving a city truck as the spotter. And, I don't know, I just think that's a better system to do. Thank you.
Mr. Byrne?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counsel, to answer Counsel Leahy and Counsel Robinson's question. Back several years ago, we, we had, the working foreman, and the foreman are out there now. They, they, they are out there. We do have spotters because there's so many routes out there that, and, and at the time, back when I was working here, there was probably 120 to 140 contractors out there. So, to only have maybe six, six working foremen or foreman out there, we couldn't control that many contractors. We had, we had to have eyes on the road. And so, we had the working foreman out there and the foreman as well as spotters. Not every time the spotters would come in. They, they rotated in. But our working foreman and our foreman are out. They're monitoring the contractors, and they're checking on them and making sure that in locations that they're at, they've asked to see how many vehicles they have. They know how many are in. And periodically, they do a periodically check, check. And might be, you know, I want to know, trucks down? Yep, we got a truck. We only have five. We started with six. We're down. We down one. And they know that. And they report that back to the commissioner or the deputy commissioner running the operations. You know, we have all hands on deck when we're running a, a big storm. And, you know, someone made a point here tonight about getting out early, getting out on time. They're right in the money. They're spot on. We've talked about that several times with the manager and his team. And, and I think it's a, a thought and a discussion that we need to do that. We've done that in the past way back. And, and I think we need to continue to do that to save money by getting our own people out there, salting the roads, and saving money within-house, doing it with our good employees that we have here. As Counsel Robinson alluded, that we have a great staff. And I concur that we do have good people here. And we need to get the trucks going, put the sand and salt down, and keep the private contractors at bay for a little while because we'll, it'll be a big savings for us.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to make a motion to refer this to, I think, maybe the Neighborhood Subcommittee. Just, there seems to be a lot of interest still on the subject, so.
The voice of reason, Counsel Scott. Motion, Counsel Scott, to refer the Neighborhood Subcommittee. Counsel Robinson, on favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes, the ayes out. Motion's carry. We now will go to the-
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Janas?
Can I make a motion that we take motion response P next? We have a couple members of the public here to speak on that. Thank you.
Motion by Counsel Janas to take motion response P out of order. Second by Counsel Drinkwater. Motion response P, fuel-efficient vehicle policy. Mr. Clerk, do we have a register to speak on this one?
Jonathan Grossman. Hi. Hi. Good evening. Thank you. Jonathan Grossman, 83, Varnam Ave. Volunteer with 350 Mass of Greater Lowell. Want to thank Counselor Agitcher for raising the issue of this motion response, as well as the DPD Director and Energy Manager for the report. It's very encouraging. Moving to electric vehicles has a number of benefits. It helps us reach our city and our state climate goals. The extreme heat that we've seen across the country this month and around the world as well is a reminder of the urgency that's needed to address that issue. Reducing the use of gas and diesel vehicles also has positive health benefits for our residents in addition to future savings on buying fuel. So, we would strongly encourage following a policy like the one that was brought forward, the Town of Concord, which prioritizes the purchase of electric vehicles. There's no good reason now, barring some kind of emergency, for the city to purchase a new gas vehicle. All right. So, we hope the city will adopt a policy like that of the Town of Concord. Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, any more register speaker? No. Counsel Kishir?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Back on January 25th, 2022, I put in a motion asking for a vehicle inventory list to Manager Donahue. Today is June 28th, 2022, and we still haven't seen the annual vehicle inventory. And in this memorandum, it says, requires the City of Lowell to maintain an annual vehicle inventory for all vehicles and plan for replacing vehicles subjected to the policy that meets fuel efficiency ratings defined by the Department of Energy. And then it outlines the guide. This policy is, is to be enforced by the manager as designee. Do we currently have, or have we had in the past, through you, Mayor Chow, to the manager, a designee, or was the last manager the person who oversaw this? I, I don't know that you'll even know this answer. But, you know, when you start reading these policies and you start looking at them, and we really don't have in place anything that says within this, I don't think. But through you, Mayor Chow, to Manager Golden, are you aware of anybody who's been designated to be in charge of this inventory or even the policy for the Green Initiative?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the counsel. We are putting together, and it's coming in from all different sources, obviously, the vehicle inventory. That has not been, we have not had that in the past. So, we actually have somebody directed in my office working on that, that we have received practically everybody's inventory. And now we're trying to put it together, Counselor, that is somewhat digestible. But I will tell you that Catherine is here to have some of these further discussions. We, I do really believe we'll have this, I would say, with the next, the next meeting or two. We'll, I'll definitely have that inventory for you because some folks left things out that we needed to call back on. So, it would be a completed list.
A lot of the, a lot of this policy is concerning that it hasn't been followed since it's been, the last time it was revised was November of 2011, if that's correct. And I don't know that you would know or Catherine would know that.
Well, I know that Ms. Moses, we've had this discussion. She's actually very excited to, to tackle this and take this on. Once we have that complete inventory, the next vehicle we'll be buying, we'll be looking at this. And I know that Ms. Moses knows this fairly well. So, I'd leave it up to you if you'd like to discuss.
Thank you so much, City Manager, and thank you, Counselor Agitcher. To answer your question, we do have to abide by the Green Communities' different designation criteria, one of which is the fuel-efficient vehicle policy. On an annual basis, we do report to the Green Communities' things to make sure that we are in compliance with the fuel-efficient vehicle policy. I know that they have changed the way that we're, we need to report that. And the fuel-efficient vehicle policy has not been updated to necessarily reflect those changes. For example, in FY '17, the Green Communities no longer required an entire list of all of our fleet, only new vehicles that are purchased and vehicles that were retired. And so, that hasn't necessarily been reflected in the policy. But I do think, and especially with the, the opportunities from the increased price of vehicle fuels, that it might be time to look at the next generation of this policy. And I know that we do have, I have a comprehensive list of the vehicles, but there's some question as to whether it's been thoroughly updated, particularly with vehicles that have been retired and such. But as we get that comprehensive list and make sure that we have everything in place, it might be an opportunity to look to go beyond our current policy and look at the next generation.
If, if we're honest, the, this policy has never been followed. We, we can say whatever we want. We can put a number on a pallet here. We, we can follow this any way we want. The reduction in diesel uses because we don't have as many employees. There's a lot of things that come into this formula that is sent by the state. But if we don't even have an inventory, it tells me that this hasn't been followed at all. And, and I've asked for this inventory for a long time because of this very packet that I was looking for. So, there, there was a process that I put in place because as we watch, we're watching, you drive by the DPW and you look at some of the pieces of equipment out there, some of those F-250s that are rotted out and the, and the tailgates are falling off of them, and they're blowing smoke all over the place because the seals are gone in the motors. There's no way anybody's following these policies. And then water just goes on and buys a brand-new Explorer to drive down to the water intake station every day. That's what it does. A brand-new Explorer to do that, a gas one. When they make hybrids, they make all these things. So, there is nobody in charge of it. And the, the reason why I'm excited about this is I've worked with you in the past. And, you know, you are phenomenal at making sure that these things get done. And I'm excited because Manager Golden is, is taking this on, and we're going to watch this change. But I do think that, you know, like it says in the policy under, it says, "To allow continued savings for vehicle fuel, the city could consider adopting a more stringent fuel efficiency policy." The Town of Concord, for example, adopted a sustainable fleet policy attached. Some highlights of this policy include, including an early retirement program for the least efficient vehicles. If you do that tomorrow, you're going to have about three trucks left.
Well, I think, to think about the fuel-efficient vehicle policy and even the sustainable fleets policy, there are exemptions to it. And I think that a lot of our vehicles have been exempt because they're used for public safety or they're over 8,500 gross vehicle weight rating. If that's something that you think that we should take a more stringent look at, I think the advantage of the policy that Concord adopted is that it, it also, even for your exempt vehicles, it prioritizes the most fuel-efficient vehicle. So, there's an idea of utilizing EVs first. If there's not a good EV, looking at plug-in hybrids, then down to hybrids, then something that's within the EPA recommended guidelines. But I think, you know, we do have a lot of opportunity to continue to improve our fleet and to look at early retirements and look at also additional sources of funding that can help buy down sort of that total cost of ownership. And I think that that's an important and relevant metric as we look at electrifying the fleet because, you know, you're not only looking at what the initial cost is, but also the cost for the vehicle fuels themselves for the different maintenance that's required. But I think there are opportunities within this.
There's a lot of-
Counsel Kishir, maybe Mr. Manager has some insight that could be helpful before you continue your question, if that's okay, if you would like, Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I was just trying to answer the question. Counselor as well. I mean, there are a lot of opportunities, as Ms. Moses had stated. And one of the issues that we had run, run into, when we started to receive all this information, it wasn't standardized. So, I didn't want to send out information that wasn't standardized across the board. I think that if we came to many of the department heads and asked you, matter of fact, I was very impressed with some of the department heads, they could tell you exactly what they had by make, model, year, and so on and so forth. But we're just trying to, once again, standardize this list where everybody, so you're going to see it from top to bottom, alphabetized if, if desired, because I think at that time, we'll be looking at this for the next purchases. How are we going to get there? So, the standardization of the list to make, to ensure what we have, and then what is our next move and which of the vehicles we can actually purchase. You know, for instance, the vehicle that I have is an ECO, ECO vehicle. It goes back and forth, shuts itself off, things of that nature. Some of the vehicles that we have wouldn't do that. Some of them are, they don't have to be because of the weight, as Ms. Moses was saying, or, or maybe it's a public safety vehicle. But I think, I think this conversation is going to get much deeper. And I think we're going to get a lot better answers once we have the standardized list as to what we actually have in our fleet. But I don't want the thought process to be out there that department heads do not know what they have. It's just not standardized. You would be looking at seven different ideas or eight different ideas of people that have vehicles. And we're trying to bring that all into one.
My, my question is that, is there a policy where, when was the last time department heads have been given this policy? This is the first time I've seen it, and I worked here in 2013. I've never seen this policy until last week when the minutes came out. How many department heads provided this policy before this week? And the question is going forward. I would implore the manager to make sure that every year it gets sent to the department heads, and they sign off saying they received it and read it. Because it's important that we start walking this way and starting to make policies in place. One of the communities I worked for, that was the policy. They made you sign off on a, a policy that said you won't idle longer than five minutes in a vehicle. You will shut them off. Even if you're out in the cold, you have to shut the vehicle off. And a lot of the new vehicles, the, the heavier ones, will shut themselves off. So, these policies have to be put in place. And, and I think there are good outlines from other communities that force employees all to sign off on these policies. So, when they're cutting a lawn, they don't say at the end of it. And Counsel Robinson will, will attest to this, that when you go to some places, some people will run an F-450 out in a park while they're cutting the lawn with the air conditioner on because they, after they're done cutting the lawn, they want to get in the truck and be cooled off, you know, and it runs for a half hour. So, I think that those things really have to be addressed, and, and people need policies put in place. And, and, you know, I'm encouraged by the conversation because I know Catherine's a person who will follow through on it and, and get it done. So, I thank the manager for taking the time to even address some of this stuff because I do think that it will make a difference. And I'll leave you with that.
Mr. Manager?
Once again, Mr. Mayor, through you, there is a lot of opportunity, as has been stated earlier. Pretty excited about doing this, and I would hope that we would be moving in that direction sooner rather than later. But there's a, once again, there is a lot of opportunity for what I would term as a pretty easy success. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Moses.
Counsel Nune, then Counsel Robinson, and then-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a good discussion to have. And, you know, given that the policy is over a decade old, and yes, Counsel Kishir is correct. Sometime, it's been practiced as not just for the City of Lowell, but for other, you know, place, too, that you have policy and yet, you know, the employees never see it or didn't get to read it. The idea Counsel Kishir has brought up is the right one. And maybe when we revise, you know, amend these policies and that, you know, that, you know, a department head should read it and should follow through with it. This topic of discussion is going to, it's good to have it, and, and it's going to be, you know, a lot to talk about. And so, I would suggest that we send this to the Utility Subcommittee and to have some more, some more discussion. And Ms. Moses can provide us more detail as to, you know, how it's going to be revised and, and how it's going to be implemented going forward. Thank you.
Motion by Counsel Nune to refer the Subcommittee, second by Counsel Robinson, on favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes out. Motion's carry. Still on this motion response, Counsel Robinson, Counsel Yam, and then Counsel Janas. Counsel Robinson?
I just wanted to make the motion to see if it should go to Subcommittee. I'll say-
Okay, that's- I'll say, Counsel Yam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Moses, for the report. I'm glad to see the section say "Iling." The, the vehicle have to be turned off. I, I have the resident brought to my attention talked about that some of the city DPDW or some other city vehicle was parked and running while the employee stopped by to get some food or to get to a, to pick up some, some other item in the store. And they brought up to me, and they asked me that they are sacrificing to pay the increase in their property tax. And they asked that the city, just like at home, you tell your kids to turn off the lights when they're not using in the room, use less toilet paper, things like that. And the same apply to, to the department, you know, the cost-cutting saving. And vehicle is one of them in the wintertime. The cars running when the staff is going into the store or other, other areas. So, I'm, I'm glad to see that the Iling addressing it, and hopefully will be exercised, passed along to all department and employee of the city. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Counsel Janas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. Currently, does the city have a policy management software repository, anything along those lines? This is not the first time that this council has discussed policies and not being adhered to, not being updated, et cetera. So, just wondering if such a thing exists in the city today. And this might be a better question when we have the IT manager available. I'm not sure.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, that's something I would have to check on, to see if that is something that we have. To my, top of my head, I would have to say no, but Munis is a, it's a pretty big, pretty big system, so I would have to check on that and get back to you.
Sure. I'm not sure if Munis has the potential for this or not.
I'm learning that it has a lot of capability.
Yes, it definitely does.
That's where my concerns are, saying, no, we don't.
But, you know, when I worked at the Health Center, one of the projects that I led was implementing policy management software. It's a central repository, so there's one place for people to go search for policies and procedures and then you can build things off of that, approval chains, timeframes and everything. So if you have a policy that has to be reviewed every year and three, four people got to approve it in a row, you know, it knows that. And ahead of time, it will start notifying people via email to say, hey, your policy on, you know, widgets and wonkiness is up for approval, you know, you have to look at it, approve it, and send it on to your manager, et cetera, et cetera. And it really transformed the way that the organization was able to, you know, manage all those policies, stay on top of them, and continually update them as needed. So it might be something to explore, might be a longer-term project, but, you know, I'd be interested in talking a little more about this offline with you and the team at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other comments. We now go to the next motion response back to the, back in order to motion response G, Firehouse Water Heater Repairs. Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I just had a couple of questions if, if, so I guess maybe the Commissioner, I just didn't know if, so Brant Street was having some hammer issues, do you know if they get over and fix that?
I'm sorry?
Brant Street was having some issues, do you know if they fixed those with the water heaters yet?
I'll check out on it. I, that's the first I've heard about it, but I can check that.
All right. And Lawrence Street was having issues too. And so Pine Street and Old Ferry Road, they're going to get to that?
So Pine Street should be completed and will be turned, it could be completed by Friday and it'll be turned on probably Tuesday, the 5th of July, and then we'll be into Old Ferry Road. We have to move something out of Old Ferry Road and we should be done that hopefully by mid-July.
Okay.
But I'll be, I'll check up on Brant Street and Lawrence Street Firehouse. I meet every other week with the fire chief on firehouse issues and we're going through, you know, a few things and it's been really well and anything that pops up, other than that, we, he'll talk to me or he'll fire off an email to me. So we do have a, every other week meeting and on many issues other than just hot water tanks.
All right. When you meet with the chief, do we meet with the, is there a union rep there too or just the chief?
Just the chief and I, but if there was a union rep, they're welcome to come to the meeting if they want someone there.
All right. No, I appreciate the effort, it's just, this is, and you weren't here, but this has taken over a year to get hot water tanks into the firehouses, which is really...
I know the process has been longer than probably anybody would like, but we also have been pulling people off different projects to get to other projects too. So it's just not, we're just not concentrating on hot water tanks and everything. So we just don't have, you know, dedicated people, just we put them in and do hot water tanks. We get pulled in many different directions every day and to try to put out, you know, some immediate situations that are safety issues or problems. So we're going to get, we're going to get these taken care of and hopefully we start getting into the painting operations in the fall with some of the students and our own staff as well. We're doing cleanup right now downtown with painting, we're going to be into the schools this summer, and then we're going to be into the firehouses along with the students from Greater Lowell Technical High School.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here are none. We now go to the next motion response H, Collapse Sewer Cover, 90 Lincoln Street. Counsel Robinson.
Thank you very much for the response. I appreciate it.
No other comment. We always have taken up J, I'm sorry, I, we now go to J, motion response Cumberland and Ludlam Streets. Counsel Robinson.
Again, thank you for the response. Same thing with K, both of J and K, both, thank you for the response, I appreciate it.
Okay. K is all set. We now go to L, motion response Trash Enterprise Fund. Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, the trash account is largely dependent on the general fund, so it's not something I'm looking to implement this year. I mean, it's something we could look at next July, so definitely something we could talk about in the Finance Subcommittee. But what, the reason I brought it forward is because I had heard from numerous residents that were concerned about the use of general funds to subsidize trash and recycling when they don't receive the service. So that was why I thought this was a way that we could possibly separate that out from the general budget, so the people that aren't receiving the service won't be paying for the fund. So I'd just make a motion to refer to the Finance Subcommittee for further discussion.
Okay. Motion by Counsel Scott to refer to the Finance Subcommittee, second by Counsel Newen on favor of the I post say no, the I say no, Counsel Newen still have a comment on this?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, maybe question for the CFO, but I concur with Counsel Scott that it's a good idea to look into this, you know, but we need to make sure that, you know, the account, the enterprise account for trust and trash and recycle collection is sustainable, because you look at all the enterprise accounts, you look at parking, you look at waters and whatnot, they're not sustainable and it's a deficit there. I think, you know, when was the last time we looked at the fee structure, Mr. CFO?
Mr. Baldwin.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the last time a comprehensive look at the fee schedule was in and around 2016. There was a comprehensive review done and many amendments to the schedule of fees in the ordinance. There have been one-offs with new fees or certain fees that have needed to be amended for specific reasons in the interim, but that was the last time a full look was, but one has been called for by this council just recently, so that is something we're looking at now.
I think, I think refer to this, to the Finance Subcommittee, it's a good thing, then you look at the fee structure and if need be, if we, the council decided to go into the, put this into enterprise account, this would be a good idea, but need to do it in conjunction with looking at the fee structure to make sure that this enterprise fund or the enterprise account is sustainable. Thank you.
I saw some hands up earlier, but that probably was still second to refer to the Subcommittee. Thank you for that. We now go to M, motion response. Counsel Moseya.
Is it possible I could suspend the rules to bring in an ordinance 7.2 so that Terry Ryan can leave?
Motion by Counsel Moseya to take item, what number was that again?
7.2.
7.2 out of order, second by Counsel Newen, and 7.2, just give me a second. 7.2 is the ordinance, amend HCID parking garage. Any comments or questions? Here are none. Just get a motion to refer to public hearing on July 12, 2022 at 7:00 PM by Counsel Moseya, second by Counsel Robinson on favor of the I post say no, the I say no, motion is carried. With 7.2, does anybody else want to have a suspension rule? Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I'd like to suspend the rules to go over the motion response, I believe it's V?
Yeah, V.
V, please.
V.
Regarding the flag program?
Motion by Counsel Robinson to take item motion response V out of order, second by Counsel Moseya. V, motion response of the flag program. Do we have a registered speaker on this one, Mr. Clark?
No.
No, okay. Counsel Robinson.
I just would like to thank Mr. Crew, I believe he's here, for this report back. One thing I'd like to add, I know they identified some key corridors as potential nodes, Stunaville Bridge Street Corridor, that was somehow left out.
The main staple. Your microphone got cut off.
Which is the main staple basically of the district. And in addition, this, I understand the branding and marketing aspect of it, but the initial motion was more so identifying through basically nationality flags of each district. So if there's Southeast Asian population in this district, then you might have the Laos, Vietnamese, Cambodian, you know, if there's different flags that represent the different parts of Africa and we have a high amount of those residents living in that district, then we would fly those flags. I think the branding and a lot to like about Lowell banners, that's, you know, that's something, right time, right place, I guess, but the initial motion was basically to identify cultures and identities of each district. And that doesn't just have to be, you know, the nations. It could be LGBTQ plus, it could be however the residents prefer to be identified, if there's a flag and you have a good population, I think that'd be something. But at least the initial push is there to identify locations to the corridors and also opportunity for local artists and somewhat keep it uniform. So, thank you and if you'd like to have, you have anything to say on this, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, through you, Mr. Mayor, to you, Counsel with this. Thank you, and thank you for the notes and we'll keep, we're excited to get to move forward on this, so your feedback is greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
You're also Counsel Robinson, Counsel Yam.
I'm dying on me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had similar sentiment as Counsel Robinson talked about regarding the flag number, and I appreciate, you know, the section that talked about different area in the city, I appreciate that very much. But I would like also to see the flag of the nation that represent that particular area and particularly like in Cambodia Town, we have, we used to have banners that identified the Cambodia Town and the cultures and all of that, that's a kind of the flag similar to Counsel Robinson was talking about. So I appreciate you pointing out certain section of the city and I think that's a great point, but the original was to put some flags in different nation, things like that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Rook.
Thank you. I appreciate the suggestions by my colleagues, but just in my little neighborhood alone, we have multiple different cultures and backgrounds. I think to pigeonhole a neighborhood with one or two certain nationalities of where you're from, I think is a little bit dangerous. You know, I think that Lowell is a city, no matter where you live, you're welcome. I think that the motion, forgetting the Bridge Street Corridor, which I agree with Counsel Robinson on that, that should be added to it. But I think we as a city are very welcoming to everybody no matter what part of the city you live in, so I prefer to keep it the way it is here. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by counselors? Here are none. Thank you, Peter, for being here tonight. Any other motion to take any items out of order, if you have any speakers or here are none, we can go back to the agenda, the next item on, coming up next. I think we're down to item M now, right? Okay, motion response, Health Benefits Trust Update. Counsel Newen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Managers and CFO Baldwin, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel, CFO Baldwin. I'm very interested in this report. It's very detailed. Thank you. What the part I'm interested the most is the employees' share of all the Health Benefit Trust. You have here, sitting here, is $2.1 million, right? So how long this money been on here, sit here?
Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Approximately 10 years, Counselor, and the city treasurer is the custodian of the funds, but it does belong, in a sense, to the Public Employee Committee, the PEC as referenced in the memo.
So you're speaking of the PAC, the PEC, the committee consists of who and what can they do with the money and why don't they do something about it? For example, use some of those money to help employee with copayment on their, you know, medicines? Or I heard of the word benefit, benefit health. Can you expand on the benefit health and can you tell me why they're sitting there and why they're not being used, some of them, to help the employee?
Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll address the question by recounting some of the history. This account is the remainder of what used to exist in the city in the Health Benefits Trust. So prior to joining the Group Insurance Commission, the city was self-insured for health insurance and operated a trust. When we moved to a sort of pay-as-you-go model with the GIC, a premium-based health insurance, the help, the remainder of the trust was liquidated. And so it was split in the manner in which the funds were put on deposit, so 75/25, 25% belonging to the employees, 75 to the city. The city invested the 75% of its share into an OPEB trust fund. This is something we have on deposit to help mitigate the liability of OPEB, other post-employment benefits. The remainder, the 25%, is, as I mentioned before, on deposit and belongs to the PEC. The PEC is a group of all of the city unions that bargains with the city manager for health insurance, health insurance. And so you asked about what the account can be used for. There are a specific set of things that it can be used for. As communities were moving away from the self-insured model, the Department of Revenue issued some informational guidelines. It can be used for things, as you mentioned, Counselor, a premium holiday, but it has to be health insurance related, to be brief. And so it is up to the PEC. There's an agreement in place between the city and the PEC whereby the PEC will submit a plan for the disbursement of the funds and we are awaiting receipt of that plan.
When do you anticipate that they will have that planned by?
Mr. Baldwin.
We did just have a meeting with the P, so it's a separate agreement from the PEC agreement, which is the vehicle that keeps us in the GIC. I can't speak to the fans of the PEC, but we are in negotiations with them now.
So other than those that you're talking about, this money cannot use just about for anything except because it doesn't belong to the city, does it?
That's correct, Counselor. It belongs to the employees.
You should do something with that money. Thank you.
I'll go to the next motion response. N, that exclusion Lowell High School, Counsel Newen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I asked for the report from, thank you, Mr. Managers and CFO Baldwin, the reason I asked for the report is that I understand that, you know, the point is not to get it off, the point is to get it off the levy, right? The levy, one you pay off, I just want to, really, that's want to stay in the levy. I know that this is going to be a long, a detailed presentation on it. I would ask if this report can go to the Finance Subcommittee and to have the CFO and/or the department who are out to give us a detailed presentation on this, that would be great.
Motion by Counsel Newen to refer to Subcommittee, second by Counsel Yam on favor of the I post say no, the I say no, motion is carried. Counsel Kishir still have comments on this?
Sure. Through you to Manager Golden. We had a lot of discussion before you were city manager about using opera funds to offset the $38 million overrun and also the infrastructure bill. And we had some positive news come from then-manager Donahue about that. Do you know if we're moving in that direction or are we all of a sudden just backing out of that direction? Because it seemed like there was Because it seemed like there was going to be a lot of funding to offset the $38 million. So do you know where we are currently? Or could you get us a report on it through you, Mr. Mayor, to Manager Golden? Or to CFO?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much. I'm just conferring here with CFO about an audit opinion that was brought forward prior to me getting here. And I think the audit opinion was not favorable.
Mr. Baldwin?
To that point, as the council will recall, we requested an opinion from Powers and Sullivan about the use of ARPA. And the opinion detailed that the revenue loss component of ARPA was an eligible use of the funds towards something like the Lowell High School project, but that it did not fit under the Treasury guidance in any of the other categories. Water and sewer infrastructure, addressing the negative economic impact, so on and so forth. As it relates to, excuse me, the infrastructure money or other federal funds that are available, those the city has not received yet. And so I can't speak to the possibility of any other state or federal relief for the funds.
It was my understanding that after this was put forth, we asked the manager to go back and ask the Department of Treasury or and/or Congresswoman Trahan what the usage could be. And we were told at this council meeting, one of the council meetings, that it was a positive result and that Powers and Sullivan, it was just an opinion by them. But we actually went to another source and looked at using those revenues that way, and it came back positive. So maybe you weren't made aware of that at that point. But it was stated at this, in these council chambers, that we would be able to use funding from other sources to start to offset this. Could we revisit that, Manager Golden, and see where we are on that? Because that's extremely important. And I think that as a body, we were told that there were other areas that we could take funding from and get that offsets. And whether it was a portion or the whole. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. We haven't seen anything in writing in that. I do recall a conversation of maybe, possibly, maybe you could look at it, sure. But one of our concerns, and I think it's coming from our auditor, that if at any point in time we misappropriate any of the funds, there's a, there is, there possibly is a clawback provision. But it's something that we can move forward and try to ask again if there's something we can get in writing, that this will not be one of those pieces. I hope the clawback is the right way to say that. So that's one of the concerns. Yes, a lot of positive talk, a lot of positive discussion, but nothing actually in writing.
At the time, and I'll go look back at all the records that I researched, there are other communities that have done this and used it, we, and used it in this way and have used it positively and got the okay from the Department of Treasury. So that's why we came back and said, okay, is there a way to do it? So if you could just research that and get back to us, because there's 38 million reasons why we should be researching this and trying to bring this down in that manner. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Here on none. We'll now go to the next motion response. O, marijuana excise revenue update. Council Noonan?
Thank you for the report, Mr. Managers and Mr. Baldwin. I'm all set with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful. Always have taken up item P. We now go to Q, motion response, city-owned properties. Counsel Scott?
Just thank you for the report.
Wonderful. We already have taken up item R and S. And I'll go to T, motion response, vacancy tax. Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only comment on this one is just around, I guess, just a continued discussion, to, you know, keep discussing this around coordinating how we can collect this fee. I know it's a one-time yearly fee, which I'm not sure really, you know, does what I thought it would do. Because what I'm looking at is properties like in Back Central that have been empty for multiple years, two, three years. And I'm trying to see if there's a way that we can kind of move these properties along if there's a reason that they're leaving them empty. So if we can continue looking into charging this, having a way to charge this so that maybe that could happen and free up some of these properties. There's lots of people looking right now for housing. And I think this is a way that, you know, we could work on that. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. We have found that the banks are usually pretty good with this. And the next issue that we will be talking with the Assistant City Managers to make sure that the inspectors are also out there reminding the inspectors to press this as well. So that is something. But we do find that, according to Assistant City Management call, that the banks are pretty good with, I want to, I want to call it the self-reporting when it does happen. So that, but we do probably need to reach out to some of the inspectors to make sure that they are reporting this as well.
Thank you.
Counsel Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as a real estate broker, I do work on this bank-owned property. And like the manager was talking about, the bank is very good at it. I'm in a few instances use the form and the bank will pay. And the bank assign a broker such as myself to keep the property in line with what the city, including cut the grass, including keep it secure. There's nobody to live in the property. The only problem, some property that we see, it's in a trust, a family. You know, for like five or six family have property together. So they were internal fighting among family members. I know a couple property in the Highlands that are, sit there with all trees overgrown and shrubbed and stuff like that. So again, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through Mr. Manager, Mr. Baldwin, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. One suggestion I may have for consideration, either by the maker of the motion or by the council, is that included in the response is a copy of the ordinance that lays out the vacant foreclosed program. A component of that, an incidental component, is the vacant foreclosed revolving fund, which also exists by ordinance. And it outlines the types of expenditures that we can make to secure properties. And it may be worth, a suggestion I may have for the council, is to take a look at both the ordinance and the fee, perhaps in a subcommittee level. It may be worth expanding some of the eligible expenditures that account does bring in a good amount of money. This is later on in the agenda tonight. Every year, we have to reauthorize and set the spending limit for revolving fees, excuse me, revolving funds every year. And this revolving fund is one of them. Perhaps a way to address some of the things that the council's talking about in the neighborhoods would be to take a look at the revolving fund and the ordinance. There is about a $230,000 balance. So it does bring in a good amount of revenue every year. And just one more comment I will make. The last time we did a comprehensive look at the fee schedule, this was one of the fees that was increased substantially. And the thought process was, you know, these are banks that are paying in large part, and they don't really bat an eye at some of these checks that they're writing. And so it did lead, it resulted in a substantial increase in the fund balance. And that could finance some of these efforts that the council is considering. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Yem?
Just quick comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to that. I remember startup 500. Now it went up to 1,000. The bank paid for it with no problem at all. The problem is that some of the property with families and dispute that is sitting in. I do not know how the city can enforce to have that. Or like the city used to do, go to do the cleanup, you know, even demolish, and then put the lien on the property. So that's one way of clean up the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Mosia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. We have code inspectors, building inspectors, health inspectors. Do we have the adequate supply of these people? Or are we missing people along the way?
Mr. Manager?
I just wanted to hear Sean say his words.
Finally, it's the third meeting and first time I get to speak. I mean, we could always use more inspectors. We do have an extra health inspector right now that was through ARPA funds. And I think we're pretty good. But I, you could always use more inspectors. There's never a dull moment for the inspectors.
We're going to fill positions, are we not?
I think that we're fully staffed right now.
Because it's an effluent futility if we create rules and ordinances and things and we don't have people to enforce this. And this is my pet peeve.
Through you to the counselor. Currently, right now, under the ordinance, we have all of those positions filled. So we would have to create, no, we have one more?
We have a health inspector vacancy. We just promoted internally because our senior health inspector got a nice promotion. But we're in the process of hiring. And then as of 7/1, we do have a second full-time wire inspector that will hopefully be looking to hire. And we're looking to post a part-time plumbing and gas position soon for on-call. But for a city of this size, you know, to only have five health inspectors and five building inspectors, there is quite a lot that is on their plate. And they're a very hard-working team. So of course, if the council wanted to divert more resources to code enforcement, we wouldn't say no. But there's always a balance, and we think.
I guess that's my point. If we wanted to increase, we'd have to come back to the council and say, under the ordinance, we would increase it to, you know, one more or two more or three more, whatever the case may be.
Let's just say, as far as code inspectors, do we have them assigned to different areas of the city? Okay.
Yes, building inspectors always had their own area. And the health inspectors are now assigned to a specific area as well as their own designated food list that they're responsible for.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I'd just like to echo. I think that's a great point that Counsel Mersey just brought forward. When we start looking at some of these potential changes and enforcement required things, I think we have to really do look at assigning somebody to be tasked with this additional workload. Thank you.
Seeing the other hands, we now go to the next motion response. The last motion response of the night is you, Cannabis Cafe, Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I only, I have a quick question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. McCall. I noticed on the state's website, they say there's 12 host communities allowed, potentially. And they list five communities that are kind of almost earmarked to take part of this program for whatever reason that may be. The response says, you know, they haven't allowed or started their end of it. But is there a way we could at least notify or put them on notice that we would be interested once they get this kind of rolled out? And what would be the requirements for us to at least? So then if it goes to Subcommittee and it's something the council does decide to pursue, at least we still have the option of one of the 12. Thank you.
Ms. McCall?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. Yes, we made it clear to the, this was, what's in the motion response is what I got from the Cannabis Control Commission. And then I was put in touch with their government liaison person to get more details. And they're going, and I indicated that the council was interested and that we just wanted more information. And so as more information to participate happens, they'll keep us informed. I'm assuming that the five, and I guess I shouldn't assume out loud, but I believe the five that you're talking about are, have already adopted local ordinances that allow cannabis cafe. We do not, under our existing zoning code. It's not an allowed use.
Okay, thanks. So it's almost like the opposite, that those communities kind of took this first step on their own. And now, as a result, they're on that shortlist.
At this point, we can't participate in the pilot.
Okay, can I send this to Cannabis Subcommittee as well for more discussion?
Motion by Counsel Robinson to, sent to the Cannabis Subcommittee. Second by Counsel Yem. On the face of the eye, pose a note, eyes have it. Motion is carry.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Mosia?
Could we bundle Communications 5.2 to 5.7? And if I could make a disclaimer about Dennis Mercia, he, even though he calls me ma, I'm not his mother. But that's okay.
Sure, absolutely. Let's just wrap up the motion response here. We had a lot. We almost covered the whole alphabet, but we're done with that. So just need a motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Drinkwater. Second by Counsel Rourke. On the face of the eye, pose a note, eyes have it. Motion is carry. Motion by Counsel Mosia to bundle 5.2 through 5.7. We still can talk on it, even if you're bundling. Second by Counsel Scott. Okay, we can roll call on. So let's do 5.2, 5.3, and 5.7 together. And then we do 5.4 and 5.5 together. So that's that. I'm sorry? Just want to go one by one, then? Yeah, Counsel Mosia, I think might be just sufficient to go one by one. Too many suspension rules to try to cover in a short timeframe.
I tried, I tried. I'll do the same thing with the votes.
I do appreciate the effort you make.
You could read them all, and then we'd take one more call, correct?
Not all of them.
I understand that. But if you read all of them and took a roll call, it'd be fine, right?
But we can do roll call for, that's true. Would that work, Mr. Clerk? We're about your motion, Counsel. Counsel Mosia to bundle, second by, I think who's second and earlier? That was Counsel Scott who seconded. Okay, so 5.2, Communication Appointment of Candace Lawrence to Election Commission. 5.3, Communication Appointment of William Murphy to Election Commission. 5.4, Communication Reappointment of Dennis Mosia to Cemetery Commission. 5.5, Communication Reappointment of Gerard P. Logue to Cemetery Commission. 5.6, Communication Resignation of William Lovely from Conservation Commission. 5.7, Communication City Manager Request Out-of-State Travel, DPD. Before we do the roll call, any comments or questions on any of them? So need a motion to adopt by Counsel Mosia, second by Counsel Robinson. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Gitcher?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
11 years.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Mosia?
Now if we could bundle 6.1 to 6.12 minus 6.4, because we already did that one.
6.4, okay. Motion by Counsel Mosia to bundle 6.1 through 6.12.
Minus 6.4.
Minus 6.4, which we already completed. Second, Counsel Noonan. 6.1, vote, accept expend 1,500 Festival's Grant Case. 6.2, vote, accept expend 10,000 NEFA Grant Case. 6.3, vote, accept expend 7,500 Cultural District Grant Case. 6.5, vote, Insurance Appropriation Lowell High School. 6.6, vote, Set Revolving Fund Spending Limits for Fiscal Year 2023. 6.7, vote, Transfer 20,000 for Disability Commission Revolving Fund. 6.8, vote, Transfer Ballpark Energy. 6.9, vote, Transfer General Fund Energy. 6.10, vote, Transfer Latcha Debt Service. 6.11, vote, Transfer Waste Water Energy. Last one is 6.12, vote, Year-end Payroll Adjustment. Any comments or question? Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Drinkwater. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Gitcher?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
That's 11 years.
Counsel Mercia, any more bundling?
Well, there are 7.1, an ordinance. We already did 7.2. We could do bundle 7.1, 7.3, and 7.4. And they're going to public hearings, I believe.
Motion by Counsel Mosia, second by Counsel Noonan. 7.1, Ordinance, amend fee schedule, accident report. 7.3, Ordinance, amend self-service gas station. 7.3, Ordinance Amend Self-Service Gas Station. 7.4, Ordinance Create LPD Revolving Funds. Any comments or question? Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Scott, second by Counsel Yem. Did we have a roll call on any one of them? Okay, all of them referred to a public hearing on July 12, 2022, at 7:00 PM. So, we don't need a roll call. On favor, which one did a roll call? None. On favor, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. We now go to eight reports of the subcommittee. 8.1, Municipal Facilities Subcommittee Joint with Lowell School Committee, Facilities Subcommittee, June 21, 2022. Who's the chairperson that would like to make a report on this? Consular Leahy?
Thank you. I'll be brief, it's getting late. Last Tuesday, I believe, or Wednesday, we had the municipal facilities subcommittee with the school department, myself, Jackie Dougherty, school committee Dominic Lay, and school committee Del Rossi. Also present were school committee Thompson and Paul St. Clair School Buildings. The gist of the meeting was, we were talking about the security of the doors, windows at all the schools. We were assured that—by Mr. St. Clair—that all repairs for the doors were done, doors are secure at the schools. We went through the procedure that if there is an issue at a door—with the door at a school—it is fixed immediately, either in-house or through a vendor. We talked about the outdoor cameras and the security where you come up to a school and you push the button to get into a school, identifying yourself and being on camera. Those cameras are being double-checked by a vendor right now, and they should all be in working order, clear lenses, and no problems with that. The next issue we talked about were repairs of windows and screens. School department has—with the DPW, but I think more on the school side, they've taken the initiative of fixing windows, replacing screens. Last year, we fixed—they fixed approximately 690 windows. There's about 70 more window repairs to be done. About 94 screens were fixed—are left to be fixed, and—well, were fixed, and there's about 170 more screens to be fixed this year. And then, we set up another meeting for the 12th of July. And really, what we want to discuss at that meeting, with having all parties involved, school and city side, is to see what the final number is that we can agree on, that money will come in for school repairs through ARPA funds, through—I forget what the school—the school-side money is, Esser funds. So, the big discussion is going to be—you know, last year, we took a vote on the school side to commit about $14 million. We thought we were going to get $14 million from the city side for a combined total of about $28 million to get controls, HBC, heating issues out of the way. So, that seems to be the big discussion now. You know, this is one-time money that we have coming in, and we've got to take advantage of it. I think that there's plenty of money on both sides that the federal government has given us, and if we don't come to an agreement and solve these issues right now—we're never going to solve them again—with—we're just never going to have this money that comes in. So, in the meantime, I've also found out, and I'm trying to confirm, that I think there's more money for the schools to go after, maybe, through the federal government. I'm trying to confirm that. But we should be taking advantage of all monies available. And this has been going on, you know, for 20 years that I've been involved, that, you know, certain conditions at the schools need to be taken care of, so it's a good learning environment. And we shouldn't be putting a lot of this money into raises. The money should be going into the classroom, should be going into the school buildings, so that the environment is good for teachers, students, all staff. And this is what we need to come to an agreement on and settle this once and for all. So, there will be a meeting on July 12, and we'll continue the conversation on how we're going to upgrade our school buildings. So, that's a report of progress.
I just want to thank Counsel Leahy for the brief report.
Thank you.
Very brief, Consular.
You're welcome.
No other comment in the motion to accept the report as part of progress by Consular Rourke, second by Consular Robinson. On favor, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. 8.2 is the Housing Subcommittee Joint with Zoning Subcommittee, June 28, 2022. Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Joint Housing and Zoning Subcommittee met earlier tonight to discuss a motion that was filed by Consular Robinson and myself, requesting the city council to begin conversations around zoning and accessory dwelling units with a focus on potential increase in housing stock. The meeting was attended by Housing Committee Chair, Consular Yem, as well as committee members, Consuls Noon and Leahy. In addition, Consuls Rourke, Robinson, Mercier, and Gitcher joined the meeting as well. We're also joined by Director Christine McCall from the Department of Plan and Development, and Francesca Sigliano from the department as well. We really just started the meeting with Director McCall giving a brief overview of the state or the landscape for accessory dwelling units as it exists in the city today. As it exists, they are only allowed by special permit in the limited urban single-family zone, and really, there are not any requests coming forward to put on accessory dwelling units because of just how limited the current use is. So, essentially, you know, what accessory dwelling units are, are, you know, additional units that can be added to an owner-occupied home, whether attached or sometimes detached from the unit. They can be used as an independent living area for somebody else with separate kitchen, separate bathroom, separate entrance, that can add a little bit to the housing stock to the community, oftentimes used for members of the owner's family. They may live in the additional unit or the primary unit, or potentially used to add to some of the rental stock for the community. About a dozen members of the public spoke on the topic, and at the end of the meeting, there was a motion made and passed by the joint subcommittees to request the Department of Plan and Development to come back to the joint committees with a draft ordinance that would allow a more expanded use of accessory dwelling units in the city for further review and work by the committees. And one consistent thread through much of the public testimony that was offered was just urging the committees to move slowly and methodically to evaluate a number of the different options that can be—that should be considered as part of an ADU ordinance. These include things like, you know, the dimensional requirements, parking requirements, square footage requirements, and, you know, how—whether, you know, they would, you know, potentially—or maybe introduce a restriction for using them as things like short-term rentals. So, these are all issues that the committee intends to work through with the use of a draft ordinance. So, the meeting was continued to a later date. I believe we are going to look at reconvening the committees probably four weeks from now, the council meeting four weeks from now. So, we'll get the date out as soon as we confirm that. But that's a report of progress on the committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr.—Ms. Mayor, and thanks to my co-chair, Consular Drinkwater. There were 13 residents that came, three of them on Zoom, to speak, all of them except one in opposition. Many discussion were excited about the possibility adding additional housing stock to the city of law. One theme throughout the comments that people want to see is that we are not rushed into changing and making ADU, but, you know, carefully study the best way, so that there will be no unintended consequences as a result of adopting the ADU. So, we continue to—next meeting, four weeks from now, as Consular Drinkwater has stated. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I would just like to make a correction for the clerk. There was like two or three speakers in opposition, the rest were in favor of. It was worded that pretty much all but two were in opposition. It's the opposite. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, note the correction. Consular Mosier?
Yes, thank you. I just want to make a note that I was out in the audience, listening to this subcommittee meeting, but I also was listening to people talking, and someone said something that I think they wanted me to hear, so that I could bring it forward. And they said it might be a suggestion to have Dave Fuller weigh in a little bit. I don't know. Maybe he could have a comment or weigh in on it, add input. I don't know, that's my comment, and I said I'd bring it forward for him. So, I guess everybody getting involved to some degree helps to some—so, if we could reach out to him as well, so—
To the two co-chairs, will there be another meeting call coming up soon? If so, maybe invite Mr. Fuller to attend the next subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, I think we—we're going to look to confirm the next meeting, you know, with the clerk, and certainly would welcome his attendance.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Here, none, need a motion to adopt the report as part of progress, and also to adopt the motion by Consular Mosier, second by Consular Robinson. On favor, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. 8.3, Wire Inspector Report. One, National Grid Request Replacement of Four-Inch Regulator Station on Lakeview Avenue, and two, National Grid Request Installation of Seven Feet of Gas Main along Dalton Street. No comments. Need a motion to accept and adopt accompanying orders by Counsel Scott, second by Counsel Janess. On favor, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Nine, are the petitions. Consular Mosier, any bundling?
Yes, would you like to bundle 9.1 to 9.6? And if anybody has any comments along the way, that's fine, too.
Motion by Consular Mosier to bundle 9.1 through 9.6, second by Counsel Leahy. 9.1, Miscellaneous, Joseph La De Barge, for the benefit of Stephen La De Barge, request installation of a handicap parking sign in front of 37 Albion Street. 9.2, Miscellaneous, Nellie Ramos, owner Nicholas Foxanetti's electrician, request easement for equipment and heating infrastructure in order to heat driveway and sidewalk at 57 Eklund Drive. 9.3, National Grid Request Installation of Electric Underground Conduit to Service Murder Sex Street Boys and Girls Club. 9.4, National Grid Request Installation of Underground Electric Conduit at Thorne Dyke and Summer Street. 9.5, National Grid Verizon New England Request Installation, one, Joe Pole, number three at Pine Hill Street. And the last one on the bundling list, is the 9.6, National Grid Verizon New England Request Installation of One Joe Pole on Summer Street. Need—all this will be at a public hearing on July 12, 2022, at 7:00 PM. A motion to refer to the public hearing on July 12, 2022, at 7:00 PM by Counsel Scott, second by Counsel Yem. On favor, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. We now go to 10, the new motions this week. We already have taken up 10.1, we'll start with 10.2. 10.2 is motion by Consular Rourke, request city manager set up informational sessions explaining the tax abatement process, eligibility for low residents.
Second.
Second by Counsel Leahy. Thank you for screaming out your second.
You're welcome.
Just to wake everybody up as well. Counsel Rourke?
She's doing a co-motion, I guess. Yeah, so I—against a resident, I have a tuckerville, so I'd like to thank Mrs. Hall for bringing this to my attention. And considering that probably most of the eligibility for low residents are seniors, and maybe we can utilize a senior center, where maybe the CFO and, you know, the author can go about and just give a presentation on the different abatements that are available, and the process and eligibility, and how to obtain it. Thank you.
No other comments or question? On favor, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Please do not scream your second. 10.3, Counsel Gitcher, request city manager provide the city council with a plan on training city employees to obtain a commercial driver's license, second by Counsel Janess. Counsel Gitcher?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Mayor Gold, and I think there's a major challenge that's on our doorstep. As of February 7 of 2022, municipalities either have to register to be a training provider, or send employees out to be trained to become a CDL driver. What does that mean? It means that you need 160 hours of training just to—so, that's a month worth of an employee's time to become a CDL employee. So, when we start looking at employees, and we start doing the hiring process, we're having a hard time, I'm sure, getting CDL drivers like Waste Management is in everyone else. It may be—and again, this would be in the motion response—it may be imperative for the city to come out and offer a signing bonus for people who have CDLs, because right now, the average cost to get a CDL license going to one of these providers, or maybe we become a providing site, we get a registered site to become a provider, to do the training. The average cost is $7,000 to send somebody out, and then you have a month worth of downtime for an employee's salary. So, you're looking at, you know, another $3,000 or $4,000 there. So, you're talking $11,000. If there's a way to maybe put a sign-in bonus for people who come in for a CDL license, it may be something that you would willingly put out there, because you may be able to attract more applicants. But not only that, you might be able to say, okay, we'll give you a $10,000 sign-in bonus over a two-year period, and say if you stay the first year, you get the $5,000, you stay the second year. What that does is not only give you long-term employees, but it starts to get people into a process where—and it's something that would be put on your plate. But it may be worth looking at also to become a training provider. And there's very few in the state to go to, so you're going to send somebody away to do this. And right now, the challenge we're seeing everywhere in the market is getting CDL drivers, so—and we have a lot of equipment down there. So, I think it's something we truly have to get ahead of the curve and try to outsmart some of the neighboring communities and try to get some of these people in. So, that's why this is out there. We're looking for a response that actually outlines a policy that we're trying to put in place to get people to apply for the city, and hopefully have CDL driver's license, because we're doing a lot of hiring without CDL licenses, and then trying to train. But government has put a major restriction in our way again, and the cost is going to the taxpayer.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, on favor, say I, oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. 10.4, Counsel Yem, request city manager have the appropriate department allow Mr. Eliu Omo, owner of the hole-in-the-wall restaurant, to paint cement walls with New England sports teams players on the North Common, second by—
Second.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Yem?
Mr. Elius owned the hole-in-wall located at 398 Fletcher Street, and across the street from there, on the North Common, there's a bench area where people sit, and then there's cement walls around that bench, and he has a local artist who would like to paint the local sports player, New England, all that team on it. So, he—
So, he approached me and asked me, and I thought it's a great idea just not to leave it, you know, like blank cement wall. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Would we have any information on this? Because I thought this was already in the process. Did anybody know?
Anybody want to make comment from the manager's office? Or do you want to wait for the?
That is, sorry, Mr. Mayor, throw you to the manager. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, threw you to the, I apologize. This is something that we have been looking at because some folks have been taking it into their own hands, so we do want to have some standard, some standard process on this. And I know Ms. McCall was, we were talking about this earlier, so that's definitely something that, in regards to the painting of walls and the painting of sidewalks, actually, became something that was somewhat popular. So, that is a discussion. I was just looking to see if we were going to have that discussion tonight, but that is, we can get back to you on that.
My question just was, are we in the process of doing this? We spoke a while ago on it, right?
Yes, I believe the space, the, this is at the park, and so that, I think, is a different process. The property that you helped coordinate is actually where he has his outdoor seating, which is technically city.
Right.
And so, I think this is another project.
Same one.
Oh, okay. Then it should be in the process, and I'll follow.
Right across the street.
Right across the street from Hole-in-the-Wall. It's a cement bench, and then the wall is really not, doesn't look good, so he was tired of looking at it, and he want to ask if he could have the local artist he already worked with. She's very talented, she want to paint the, you know, the sport figures on that bench, on the wall around the bench. Thank you.
Just to interject one more time, would this almost be like what we did with the cement barriers for outdoor seating? Or is it different?
Counselor Leahy, thank.
I'm sorry, I just, I got a little confused.
Right.
The manager might have something to add.
Once again, what this, this city manager and I were talking about was standardizing this. Some folks have taken on their own situation here to cause problem or cause issues that weren't exactly signed off by the city. We're looking at this right now, and whether it be a sidewalk or a barrier or something like that, we're just a little concerned that people are going to go out and start, you know, painting anything. We don't allow that. Well, we don't know if we're not going to allow that yet. What kind of, this is, that's what I was talking about with the standardization. It's a, it's a, it's a work in progress because we didn't expect it to start happening, which it did.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Janess, then Counselor Mosier. Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the previous council approved a mural policy for across the city, so this may be something we want to revisit and look at, but I think that's a good starting point for this discussion, is to, is to review that and see where to go. Thank you.
Counselor Mosier?
And I'm concerned about a park being authorized by the Board of Parks. Should they be involved in this, the Board of Parks? It's, the Board of Parks supersedes anything this city council says in regards to a park.
Mr. Manager?
Not what we say, it's what the Board of Parks say, and if this is a park, which it's a common, is it the state or it is not the Board of Parks? I don't know. I'd find out first. And I have no problem with the man doing that, but I think out of respect for the proper department, I think they supersede anything we say. So, I'd check with them if they have jurisdiction over the North Common. I don't know that. I don't want to find out the hard way and have him angry.
That's a good suggestion, Counselor. Would that say that the manager's office and Ms. McCall reach out to the Parks Department?
Correct. Yep. Ms. McCall?
Throw you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. We can get clarification on that. There's, we do have a citywide mural policy. We do have an Adopt an Island program where improvements can be adopted, you know, and then for park improvements, I'll get clarification, but my understanding is Board of Parks regulates permits for use and usage of park, but not, so I don't know that if public art would fall under a use, but we will make sure to coordinate with the Cultural Affairs Office, the Parks Department, and as well as the Parks, Board of Parks, to make sure that we are doing everything in correct order.
You all said, Counselor Mosier? Okay, no other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson?
I've seen in other, other communities, what they're doing is, almost looks like plywood or some type of material where you install brackets on the cement areas, and now artists can do artwork that kind of plug into the brackets, and it's changeable and it's not permanent. Maybe this is some of the directions we start looking at, so the space isn't something that's going to be permanently designed where you could rotate whatever art the community really wants. Thank you.
Just, just a quick comment.
Counselor Yem?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. The picture of the bench included in the package, and Mr. Elius, who the owner, he was afraid that the park would be subject to graffiti and all of that, so by having artists, you know, painted on the bench wall and everything would stop graffiti from happening because people who do graffiti tend to respect each other's artworks, so that's what he says, you know, his thought. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. No other comments? I just want to, going to point to Counselor Mosier's point. So, we voted on this motion tonight with the condition that Ms. McCall will clarify with the Board of Parks. No other questions? On favor, say I, oppose, say no, the I have it, motion is carry. We have three motions before discussing the Rule Five issues, so five minutes for three motions left. Counselor Yem, you have two of the three motions. Counselor ten point five, Counselor Yem, request city manager have the appropriate department issue a fifteen-minute parking spot for Brothers Pizza located at sixty-eight Merrimack Street, second by Counselor Scott. Counselor Yem?
Mr. Burn in the past, and this particular owner have requested way before I was sworn in, in December, and he had been calling me, so, you know, I was urged that the city manager along with the appropriate department, just to give him a fifteen minutes so that he can, you know, serve his client when they come to the, when they come to the establishment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other, Counselor Leahy?
Just quick, so there's no parking meters up there, so you would have to put a different type of signage up? So, just so we're aware that there's no meters on that side of the street going up Merrimack.
Any other comments or questions? Here, none, on favor, say I, oppose, say no, the I have it, motion is carry. Ten point six, Counselor Yem, request city manager have the appropriate department paint lines on both sides of Fletcher Street, starting at London Taylor, sixty-three Fletcher Street, all the way to Broadway Street, allowing customers and residents to park, second by Counselor Mosier. Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quick comment, I am the customer of the London Taylor, and he was just asking if we could do the line like other street that allow his customer, including myself, park in front of his establishment. There was a laundromat, there is a video store, and along the way, all the way to Broadway to allow customers and residents to park there, and I asked that Mr. Manager look into it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Gitcher?
Just one quick question through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager. How close are we for the city to be, the line painting to be done?
Mr. Manager?
We just signed the contract.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We did sign the contract. We can't execute it because we're waiting for the contractor to provide the fifty percent bond and the insurance that's required to execute a contract. And regarding this motion, we have to look at this, I don't believe there's parking here, so that's, this is a math problem and a potential ordinance that we'll look into, but we are, as soon as we execute the markings contract, we will be working this summer to line paint.
So, will they be able to schedule it right away once the contract's signed? Are they out far, or is it something that could be scheduled right away? Because are they giving you scheduling dates already?
No.
Did we put that in the bid that it had to be done by a certain date?
We had a contract period because we, we did, we did June 1 of this year to June 30 of, we did the fiscal year.
Will it be done before school goes back in session?
That is the goal.
Okay, thank you.
No other, no other comments? On favor, the I oppose, say no, the I have it, motion is carry. We do have a few seconds to squeeze in one last motion. Ten point seven by Counselor Drinkwater, request city manager reach out to D C A M for an update on the disposition process for the Hurt Street Courthouse.
Second.
Second by Counselor Leahy. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Even if it was at nine fifty-nine, this motion would speak for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Made it. On favor, the I oppose, say no, the I have it, motion is carry. We do have one more item, the executive session. Before we make a decision to continue with executive session or not, we need, if anyone want to make, make a motion to waive Rule Five. Motion by Counselor Gitcher, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Mr. Clerk, need roll call, please?
Counselor Gitcher?
What do we want?
Yes. Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
The item on the agenda, the last one, is the City Council Executive Session. Before I read the purpose of the executive session is that we'll be leaving the chamber here, and we will not return, we'll adjourn after the executive session in the mayor's reception room. With that said, I will read the purpose of the executive session. Eleven point one, executive session to consider and discuss negotiations relative to the larger baseball stadium pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Laws, C thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, six, for the possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, public discussions of which may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the city. Again, before we take a vote, we will not be returning to the chamber. Need a motion to enter executive sessions. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please. The motion, Counselor Gitcher, second by Counselor Mosier. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Gitcher?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mosier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Again, we'll be adjourning.
Mr. Mayor, before we.
The executive session. Let's take a ten-minute break, and I will be in the mayor's reception room.
Mr. Mayor, before we adjourn, may I wish Counselor Robinson an early birthday, birthday celebrations, sir, on behalf of the entire council and the staff?
Absolutely.
Thank you.